My phone says six.
Y'all ready?
All right.
Alrighty, let's call this meeting to order. Tuesday, October twenty first, twenty twenty five. We'll start with the roll call. Kramer.
Here.
Ferguson.
Here.
Coontz, here. Service.
Here.
Like to thank everybody else for showing up. We have another full house tonight, just about. So, thank you. Thanks again for coming. So, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Right, thank you. So, we'll review the current agenda items. Um, is there any, any proposed changes anyone would like to make, Mr. Service?
I would like to add a B under legal.
Which is?
Legal opinion on backdrop operational agreement.
Okay. Okay. We have one change proposed. Okay. Yeah, let's do, I guess we'll do that, uh, fifteen E discussion on wording for item sixteen. Is there any other changes? No, we'll just, uh, oh, when we get to that. Yeah, when we get to that permit, we can just go ahead and lump it in there. Okay, so I would like to make a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Well, I'll be with the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Makes the motion, it's on a second. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right. Motion carries on to item three, approval of October seventh, twenty twenty five, regular meeting minutes. Anyone like to make a motion to approve those?
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as they put seven.
Yeah, makes the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, any discussion on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor?
All right.
All right, motion carries. Okay, conflict of interest. You guys know the drill. If there's an item on the agenda in which there will be a conflict of interest, please state it now or when we get to that item. Okay. So, I guess, uh, town FEMA updates. I'll see Joan out there. She hiding back there anywhere?
No.
Okay, good. Um, so I guess just one quick update. Uh, we're still taking letters of interest for the open board position. And they will be due at the end of the day on, uh, October thirtieth, which is the Thursday. So, um, do you know if we've received any yet, Terry?
This one.
Okay, so we have received one. Very good. Okay, so, um, yeah, get your letters in. Do you have an update, Anthony?
FEMA update, yeah.
Okay.
So, November tenth, weekend, November tenth, we're gonna commence, uh, camera of the sewer system. So, our unit will get here. Uh, probably gonna start out with some clean sewer pipes, some of the new stuff that was put in the lagoons. Just so that we can, you know, get our sequencing and everything great and get our backdoor truck, uh, tested out. So, and get all that rolling before, uh, the winter and then we shut down for a couple of months until we can start up again.
Okay, thank you.
The temp, you say?
Yeah, we could.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thanks for that, Anthony. So, on to that. We are on, uh, engineer. So, you're up again.
Okay. So, um, the first item on the agenda is, uh, Hansag, Gary Hansag reply, E and G, um, world place. So, um, we got, we didn't really get a submittal because he, and he came in with something that was still being completed from Anderson Engineering. And, um, at the same time, um, he is wanting to get started on building one of the lots, according to the Chuck, um, information from Chuck, um, his, um, proposed tap. He's got some pre, I guess, purchased taps that he's done with the city in the past.
Yes.
And then one, I mean, that's a lot. And so, as long as, I guess, he's building, I mean, he can build anywhere on that one lot, a house, and tap into the water and sewer. So, in the interest to give him time to get his plaque completed with his engineer and get that all submitted, um, what I was proposing is to allow him to, you know, pull a permit, build in permit, or, you know, put in a permit building from an application for the one house with the tap for water and sewer, and it would basically be in an area, in a side of that lot where he could then subdivide that in the future and, you know, continue. And I figured that would get, get by on the time. I'm sure they'll get less busy in the winter here, surveyors, and they'll be able to get his stuff done for him. I know that they're down in Edgemont and they probably are so slammed that they can't even see straight, so can't get any guys to help. So, I know what it's like. So, that will probably get him what he needs to get to the s- uh, spring plat, um, submittal. And I've done that before. I just did that once. I had, I was eleven acres and had a house on it. And basically subdivided all the way around that and then that house gets sold off, so. So, that's the, it's just an update, I guess. If the board has got any, you know, concerns or anything, that would be the time to talk about, you know, things we should watch out for or however. But obviously, that, that whole plating process has to happen.
Okay, um, yeah, do you have any question for, down the board, anybody? On this one, it's kind of more of an informational.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just my, I guess, my, my recommendation or opinion on it, you know? So, when he comes in, we can say this is what consensus is and keeps you moving forward, but we need to get, um, through the plat.
Okay, yep, sounds good.
Okay, number two is the final pay application for road to advantage. So, we got in your packet, um, application twelve. And that's in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand, uh, three sixteen eleven. Uh, the contractor's here. I know that, and when I spoke today, he wanted to talk about, um, what's not included, but what got, um, did not get approved by D A and R, um, that, from the change order nine. And so, um, there was a certain amount that was basically left outside of his first application of September third. And, um, so, I, the best I could do with D A and R was get it, boil it down to the one thing that they had a problem with, which was that it said a cut of sludge. So, when it says sludge, then that'd be bio salads. And so, then they have to go through a whole process of bio salad handling. And that wasn't done, so that's still left outstanding. But that, what we've done is we've lab tested, so we had took soil samples in that two and a half feet along that whole area. And we sent them to Mid-Continent. Takes a little longer when we take composite soil samples and get, wait for results. Or I just checked with her month yesterday and still doesn't have results yet. Uh, but we don't wanna, and I got Kyle Door from D A and R to agree that that issue won't hold us up to close this out. So, we don't start incurring these fines, which then we would turn into liquidated damages for, for advantage, right? So, we avoid all that by going the route of closing out the project with that one item outstanding. And then, um, he would like to, uh, submit an invoice. I don't know. Do you want to give him time to talk or anything? Just explain what he wants to do. Um, and if that can be included in today's voting, then that would maybe satisfy him as well. And everybody's happy and we can move forward.
Okay. All right, Rob, would you like to come up and, uh,
Sure.
present the invoice? Do you have a copy of your invoice?
I have a copy of the invoice. Just for clarification, um, before we, um, started on, on the change order nine, we had a discussion here. And my understanding was that they, that, that, uh, it was approved and, and everybody agreed on it. Um, only afterwards, we found out that there is an issue with, with the state, uh, we had already completed the work. Um, I understand that, 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 uh, some of the wording in, in my change order, which is submitted to, to the, um, engineer, um, might have caused the, the, the state to, to be concerned about what actually we're dealing with. Um, and, uh, and, uh, you know, obviously, I, I, I feel bad about that. Now, um, I submitted it to Tom Engineer. I did not submit that to, to the state. Um, uh, so, I, I kind of feel like that should have really been, um, uh, on me why there, this, this wasn't approved, uh, because the word slide was used in the change order. Um, so anyways, just to make this, um, you know, quick, uh, I prepared an invoice for that, for the difference. Uh, the invoice is for, uh, just over twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, on the invoice, and I don't know if you just want to pass it around, there's comments on the second page, uh, where I referenced the change order number nine. Um, now, with today's final pay, I also signed that I, that I release the down of thermosa from any, any, uh, other, uh, um, charges, uh, when it comes to that project. Uh, so, kind of my invoice contradicts what I'm signing today. And maybe if you could just tell me how you want him to proceed because, uh, um, again, I, I just, uh, I don't know exactly how to go about it. So, so this all makes sense. Uh, I can say on the second page, I made some notes here, what this invoice is for, and I referenced this job. I reference Black Luna Exchange, just so everybody knows what that invoice is for. Uh, and I also referenced the change order number nine. Um, but then kind of that connects this invoice to this job, which by signing the waiver, I say I don't, you don't owe me anymore. Um, so, I, I don't have a problem redoing that invoice as long as everybody's on the same page. Uh, this is just was done, kind of, you know, running to this meeting. Um, so just, like I say, I want to make sure that this doesn't complicate things even further. Um, one thing, and that's something I don't understand, but we're waiting for approval for this balance of change order number nine from the state. But we already revised that change order. Now, I'm signing a waiver saying I make no claim against that change order. So, why would they even approve additional twenty-five thousand dollars if I've already said, well, you don't owe me anymore? Um, again, that's, it's just the questions that I have. I don't know how to address it. I'll leave it up to Tom to deal with it properly. Um, when we decided to, to, uh, um, what's the proper word? To, to change, change. Um, we had a discussion here and, and, and I thought that was understood and made clear that we're taking some amount out of change order nine. We're not permanently deleting it. We're just, we're changing out of this order to, to, to make possible for the rest to be approved by the state. But, but that balance is still out there. Um, so can I help them out a little bit?
Um, that'd be great, thank you. I'll have to say real quick. So, I was just waiting for Robert to finish and then you can add some clarification too. I'm sure the board has plenty of questions. So, we can craft the correct motion that we can look at getting approved here tonight, so.
Appreciate it. I mean, just stay here or?
If you like, yeah, if you like, you can stay there if you want to.
Just in case there's other questions, I'll just move on to the side.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, so change, so pay application twelve is the last payout. Um, so if you look at your, at the, at the document, um, it lists all the change orders. There's nine. And, uh, the only discrepancy between, um, his numbers and these numbers is change order nine instead of seventy-eight thousand nine sixty-nine point oh three. And, um, what he originally had requested was, uh, one hundred, one oh nine, thank you, at one oh nine, something like that. Um, now, the seventy-eight nine sixty-nine point oh three would be paid within this pay application if you approve it tonight. And if he, if that invoice didn't pass around for twenty-five thousand and change, was also approved tonight, that may, may not get included in the S R F. We may be paying that cash out of pocket. But that would satisfy you if the seventy-eight nine sixty-nine plus the twenty-five was approved tonight, right?
Well, that is something that we, we agreed on it. I mean, I, I don't think I should feel guilty about asking for something that we have discussed and agreed.
Correct.
And, and we have completed the work. There was no change to what we've done. So, the substantial shouldn't be a difference to the price as well. I, I, that's how I feel about it. And again, this is open to a discussion. If anybody feels different, please, um, let me know.
So, there's a discrepancy of about five, little less than five grand. And the difference is that when we put it through the S R F program, it uses the bid schedule that you did. And so, then there is associated mobilization percentage, uh, construction stakeout percentage, you know what I mean? But when you, when you break it out on its own, that twenty-five and change doesn't have those associated add-ons because it's outside your bid schedule. But it still, uh, compensates you for the work that you completed.
So, you're saying I'm out five thousand dollars if we agree to that invoice and you're asking me if that's okay with me?
Yeah, yes, no.
Okay, no, no, that's, that's true. Absolutely. I, I think if we can put this, uh, put this, you know, uh, to sleep today, I, 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 I think that's something I would be, I would be willing to do to, uh, make sure that we can move forward and, and not waste everybody else's time. Um, absolutely. That's, that's something, um, yeah, that's the percentages that came off mobilization, all the other items.
Yeah, it's like sixteen percent, what happens.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I, I think that's something that, that I would be, uh, I would be able to decide.
And the seventy-eight nine six nine, even though we don't have a written approval from D A and R on it, we do have a verbal from Tina McFarlane, who's the director. So, and they typically, these are recorded lines and they typically don't back. I've never seen them in this project backtrack on something they said. So, that's why I recommended approval. So, um,
No, payout nine.
Yeah, uh, change order nine revised like that.
Yeah.
Without that one, they had an issue with. So, you guys are taking care of that item that they had an issue with in it directly with the contractor. So that, that way, with those two votes being approved for the twenty-five, whatever, and then this payout number twelve, then he's satisfied. And then he will sign his release, the waiver of leave, and, um, and co-sign this certificate of substantial completion. Once we submit this document fully signed, there's no fees. Uh, all the penalties that we incurred over all that project are waived from the state. The document has to be signed by him and by the town. I've already signed it.
And how much did you say the five thousand what for the?
Um, so, if you use the math from the bid, because of the way the bid, the way the laws are in the S R F program, it, it tacks on percentages for, like, he's already there. So, uh, you know, the, the way it works, he like gets a percentage of anything above that as a mobilization, even though it's kind of a fake thing because he's already out there, right? But it's a mobilization is a percentage of the total. It's not, so that's how that ended up being another five thousand if it stayed in the S R F program. But the risk is they reject the entire change order, right? At least now we have them, we've taken out the one that they had an issue with, and they'll approve change order nine revised. And then all that's left outstanding is the twenty-five thousand that is work he did.
In, in a way to make it work, sometimes you have to calculate backwards. Figure out the cost of the project and then, and then kind of work it backwards. So, the five thousand dollars was still part of the amount. But again, at this point, uh, that would be something I, I would be, uh, absolutely fine with, with just applying that discount and, uh, and moving forward.
And so, our discount would be exactly five thousand dollars or five thousand what?
So, so it's thirty thousand four ten point four two. Uh, uh, four ten point four two. What's the number you had in front of you?
Twenty-five.
Two five four ten.
Yeah, it's exactly.
Four ten, one four two?
Mm-hmm, yep. So, that's exactly five thousand then. Okay, thank you.
Aaron.
So, this, we're not, the sun hasn't completely set on the possibility of that, that, um,
Getting included.
getting included, right?
Hasn't, hasn't set, but it doesn't look good.
Okay.
It's like ten days until the end of the, like, this has to be submitted.
Right. And what are, what are the chances those results come back within that time period?
Um, they could.
Okay.
They could, because I, I did it immediately when they told us to, and it's been almost, it's been two weeks, and they said it three weeks. So, it literally could be. Now, there is something about reimbursements that might go over that. Like, he needs to be done by ten thirty-one, but we might still be getting reimbursements beyond that. I mean, you're paying now. And there's going to be processing times and everything. So, it isn't entirely impossible that we could submit that twenty-five and ask for reimbursement if the money's still in there and they allow it, you know? But I just, I can envision them having conditions and things that we need to work out with them. And, you know, if we have high, higher nutrient levels than they'd like to see, then we might say, you know, that needs to be phyto remediated for a couple of years and we monitor it. They do that all the time. But they were, the biggest thing, which is a positive, which is why I sent the document that said sludge to the state, it's because they know there's no sludge in those burns. And that'd be a big problem.
Mm-hmm.
So, now they know where it's at.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So, okay, um.
There's just, there's one more on, uh, if we, it's, so if we do go through and we do by some chance end up, it ends up getting rolled into the S R F. We've already paid him. Is there any issue with that, with us paying for the work before? We can, we'd still just apply for reimbursement as if we, as though we will with any of the rest of this.
Right, right.
We have to pay for it, and then through them, we pay for it, that's to get our reimbursement, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and real quick, Rob, just so everyone's on the same page, I know it, it lists a very granular detail on the invoice, what this twenty-five thousand is for. But just generally speaking, like, what task was that used to complete, just so everyone is, uh, aware?
That would be probably more question for Anthony, because I'm not sure what was yanked out of that change order.
Oh, I see.
Um, so, uh, I lined out, ready. So, I, I just, uh, made a general invoice saying that it pretends to that change order. Um, I prefer, uh, you know, just general information rather than putting wrong information. That can be obviously addressed and, and, and I can feel how gladly, um, corrected. It's just, again, with limited time before today's meeting, I just, I just, after conversation, one conversation with Anthony, uh, we decided that that was the best and quickest way to deal with it. So, uh, so I'll just, I just dropped it in the invoice.
So, um.
So, you can vote on the dollar amount and he can amend his invoice to, and match the description that promo got pulled out. Obviously, it's, there's what the contractor would say he's doing, and then there's the bid items in a, in the, in his bid and how those fall into those categories. So, you know, he's got two guys out there for a day, right? Well, that's all baked into a bid item cost for, uh, fill block, right? So, he might break it out a lot, you know, make a nice breakout invoice, but means nothing for the bid item because it's all baked into that, that per unit runs, right?
Mm-hmm.
For human yard or whatever.
This waiver you were talking, do you have a copy of that here?
Yeah. So, these two documents, then you would want to vote on the approval of A F twelve contingent on all these documents coming in that close out the S R F one. So, that's the, uh, certificate of substantial completion and the contractor's final release and waiver of leave. And then there was an A I S certificate, and there's some checklist items that I sent on the checklist. Just want to make sure we have all those so that, you know, touch base tomorrow, maybe, or I'll touch base tomorrow with, because you'll be out of here. I'll take care of that with, uh, with, uh, Black Hills Council. Um, to make sure they don't come up with something, because we basically have ten days.
Yeah.
And I'll make sure that all our closed items, we got them, and then you'll come bigger to check and.
One, one thing I can just add, when it comes to the, uh, American made, I spoke with a supplier, which pretty much most of the, of that came from one supplier, so that makes it pretty easy. Um, but, uh, they were very hesitant to, to, to even, even, uh, uh, spending the time, uh, sending us any information. And they said that their website actually provides. So, if you have uh, the product that you bought from them, then you look it up on their website and then there will be that information stating.
So, any of these Ducks, so Dakota Bomb, D S G, E C P, and Wyoming Sun, don't worry about A I S.
Yeah, no, and, and I did, and I appreciate it. I, 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 it's only D S G because like I say, ninety-five percent of, of the stuff that Ivan valves and everything came, came from D S G. So, at least we only have one place to work with. Um, uh, you know, again, like I say, they, they, they were very hesitant. I, I talked with a gentleman yesterday and, uh, uh, he pretty much told me, okay, he will work on it. And I know that was, leave me alone. Um, uh, pretty much. Um, so, I don't know how to go about this, this, you know, as we were installing. Uh, my understanding is that all the pipes and valves and all the, all the supplies have, um, made in USA stamps on them. Um, I mean, obviously, now it's a little bit late for that, but that, that would be also, you know, that would be a good time for anybody that would want to do inspections at the time of uh, installment to, to verify if this product is, is actually American made. Uh, which again, in this case, we, we know it is. There's, there's absolutely no worries. But I, I'm not a hundred percent sure if I'll be able to obtain any kind of certificate from D S G. They, again, they were not super, uh, interested in, in doing it for me.
Okay, well, if you need one, uh, just let me know. I'll try to give them a call and see if, uh,
If they would, yeah.
they have one.
Because that's literally what you told me.
Because it's, it's gonna be, it's not for you, it's for us that we can submit, right?
Yeah. Yeah, and, um, a lot of times the contractor can do a, like, affidavit, that
Correct.
the things that you provide, they were all compliant with A I S. So, we can chase down these suppliers. Um,
It's, it's, it'll be easy, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, um, so can you, um, repeat the wording that you said, that the, that the payout number twelve will need to be contingent upon the receipt, section of certain documents?
Yeah, it just, you could say on the receipt of all checklist items uh, from the, from the state revolving fund. Um, and he has that checklist. You know, so I think this is the only thing really that's missing in that certificate. And everything else we have signed already. Um, oh, this.
Yeah. Can, I'm just kind of thinking about this. It's just generally, you know, is this something we'd better to do to break into your motions?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's kind of one thing I'm thinking, right? Like, approve the payout at the reduced amount of seventy-eight nine sixty-nine oh three and.
That's the amount, dude.
The amount, dude.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Oh, okay, so it is. Yeah, but I've heard this, and then have a separate motion that handles the additional twenty-five thousand and but it's this that needs to be contingent on
Right.
the S R F, because the other stuff.
Yeah, yeah, right now, yeah. Okay, so, um.
You can sign as soon as you can, chance.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll sign up in the state.
Yeah, I'll, uh, okay. Um, so, would you like to make the motion, Aaron?
I'll make the motion to approve the final pay application number twelve to Broke Advantage for the amount of one hundred and ten thousand dollars. One hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and eleven cents. Contingent upon receipt of the.
I'm making my certificate, I think that's the only thing I'm missing. Yeah, all checklist items.
All checklist items. For SRF closeout, yeah.
Okay, very good. Would anyone like the second debt?
I'll second that.
Seconds, okay, uh, we did have a, a nice discussion, is there any further discussion on this particular item? We kinda covered both of them in our initial discussion. Uh, Dan?
So, let me get this straight then, with this. And where you're at, when you're coming in with the, 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 the twenty-five thousand and the next motion, isn't five thousand of that? Kind of up in the air because you're not sure of your approval through the SRF or something?
No.
Still going to be.
That is already, I'm I'm already looked after at that point, the five thousand dollars is is, I guess the discount will apply. Um. So, uh, I'm, I'm taking care of, we have done. Um, there's nothing outstanding, if the town gets the approval for thirty thousand.
Right.
Well, you just make five thousand bucks.
Right, and in that, there is a possibility that that may be, that is something that is possible.
Yeah.
That's not qualified in the SRF.
That's great. Okay, thank you.
Joe.
Um, was there a retainer and a warranty period or?
The, the retainers being paid in this final payout, um, performance and warranty, uh, is good for a year. So we still hold this warranty in performance funds. Think you have copies of those, right, Terry?
Yeah, that was, that was part of the bid.
Yeah.
I I verified that today with my insurance, uh, because after going through your email, then you requested, that's, that's part of the original bid.
That's true.
So the, the bond, the performance and warranty bond is easily there.
Yeah.
Okay, um, any further discussion on this motion? Hey, don't see any, um. So all in favor of approving payout number twelve with the stated, uh, contingencies?
Hi.
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 Motion carries, so let's do a, um. I guess I'll make the motion to approve the twenty-five thousand dollar. Uh, let's call it, uh, processing and stockpiling, so that's what's on, uh. So it got taken out of payout number nine, processing and stockpiling.
Yep.
Okay, approve the twenty-five K for the processing and stop filing. Make the motion. Uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
Here in seconds, so discussion on this one? Any further discussion on this one? Everyone pretty clear on what what that's all about?
So it's exactly twenty-five thousand?
Well, actually, yeah. Twenty-five, four, ten, so I'll, uh, go ahead, I'll make a, I'll guess I'll amend the motion to. Twenty-five thousand four ten forty-two. So make the motion to amend.
Second.
Aaron, seconds, okay, so. Five thousand. Two. Seconds, okay, any discussion? All those in favor of the amend, to amend the original motion?
Hi.
All right.
Hi.
Okay, that motion carries, so the original motion should read, uh, approve. The amount of twenty-five thousand four hundred ten forty-two, all in fa, or is there any further discussion on that one?
I just wanna make sure we're not taking off the five thousand dollars.
It's already.
It's already been taken off, right? Are we sure? I want my five thousand dollars discount for the town, so. Okay.
It's already up there.
Very good.
And you.
I see as a fair trade.
Thank you.
The town is taking risk on this, so at least for me, I think that's, 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 uh. Fair trade right there.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Rob.
No, thank you.
Yep, yes, sir, uh, all those in favor, or any further discussion on this one? Anything, none, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Thanks.
Motion carries. Um, so, yes, sir, yeah, thank you. And, um. So. After, after planning and zoning, we'll take a quick recess, I'll check these out, sign off.
Okay. Um, so the next item is discussion on Brophy Road Waterline, so. Uh, when I was in, um, I was out of town, I had to run back to, do that one project at, back home in Michigan, and, uh. We had a leak in that water line that's on, uh, Main Street and Ferguson. There's a red barn there, and so.
Fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds, I'm sorry, and, um, so the, uh. The, we investigated it and it turns out that the way that water line is connected to the main. It's connected on the south side of Main Street on Fairgrounds Place, so east side of the road. And then it, there's a valve bit there and a shut off, and then it goes across the road. And it's another valve box where it tees. And there, there's a service line where the leak is at, to the red barn, and then there's a line that goes east. And services three people, uh, well, it services Bishop, and it serves two people on Brophy Road. And that's all private line, it's out of town. And so, um, obviously, it's some old, uh. Arrangement, uh, that's going on there. We wanted to make sure that, you know, if that line's deteriorating and breaking and stuff. Um, we're not having a big issue under the road in the future, that we wouldn't be able to isolate from the main. It becomes an emergency, right? Um, but I felt after investigating it that the water line could be shut off if something broke. And then we kinda need to have a discussion with those water, uh, consumers on, you know, what do we do? And then instance, what's the next steps, what's the future of that, um. You know, cuz there needs to be, normally if it's in the town system, you know, it's in our capital improvement plan, right? So we've got, but banking away money to be able to replace mains. As they were out, right? But if it's outside the system, it's a private line. Then they may not know that they need to be thinking about what to do in the future when things break, right? And so, it's, it's a part of a discussion, bigger discussion on water and sewer users outside of the town limits. There, there are, there are not very many, and maybe, I don't know if there's a dozen, you know? But they kinda fall in a category, just like, uh, the ones that are planted lots with no water and sewer, right? That's another one, so like there's these buckets, right, that we need to kinda have a plan for. And that everybody in that, in that situation gets the fair, a fair shake, you know, the right. So that's, this is an informational as well, um, it happened while I was out of town, so I wanted to let everybody know that. You know, we, we investigated and Chuck already had me fix that leak, and it's for Leo, so. That's all resolved, but it's all pipe and. It's going, coming to the end of its life, so.
Actually, yeah, just like he said, it actually splits in that part, we have, it's on the north side of Main Street. And T goes east, it mentioned services. Three people that are outside, now we've always read that master meter as the east users. Um, Anthony brought up a good point, it says. A line that goes under the road. Uh, services those people out there, and. And also it mentioned that we would have an agreement for those people to serve some water. So it's been that way for a hundred years, but I just think, I've always been concerned if the line broke. If it's a highway, the liability is horrendous. Well, but that to me, and I think they should, uh. Address, that's the issue. It can be tapped on the north side of Main Street, and eliminate that pipe under the road. Liability there is huge. If that line would break, and of course, it's the same vintage as I just broke. There's no reason to believe that. It isn't going to fail somewhere along the line, and, uh, I'm just, that reason is not, not the liability. That we, that is not our line, then they still. Should address that, if. The homeowners and landowners that are being served by that particular line. It's undersized, start with, and an old metal pipe.
So we can have a bigger line. I don't know if it's four or six, cuz there's some discrepancy, um, that other, that I mind, we were talking about something like a two, right? One or two, so, yeah, so it's small, uh, versus behind the church and the Legion Hall, there's. A bigger line, one that would be more suitable for many multiple users. So, you know, ideally, and there's a hydrant on it, so that's why it makes me think it would be a six, it's got a hydrant on it. Um, and so, that six should carry on to those users, that they get a hydrant out there. Which would help their, their homeowner's insurance and everything too, so that way there is a benefit and advantage to addressing it. But that all has to be discussed with them, it's their decision. Um, Jerry?
Yeah, Anthony, my, uh, question, is it the line? Isn't there another line that go, that, that comes down, it's about, I thought Leo said about fifteen feet to the. West of there that goes in and services, uh. The trailer park and the housing stuff there, how far away is that?
Those lines went north-south.
Yeah, probably thirty feet away.
Yeah, that's ever, that's all those people back there, forty.
What's that, is that mine, I'm just trying to tie into that?
That's the.
They could tie into that, go over to that one place, and get rid of the stuff underneath the road.
They could do that, they could do that, but now you got the Catholic church and the Legion with two water mains, one behind them, one in front of them.
Whatever the way it's money this week.
Yeah, you, I, when we talked about it, sorry, that's okay.
Yeah, um, I wanna get, Aaron had his comment too, so once he gets that pulled up, we'll go to him, but. Let's, uh, let's just keep it moving, so.
Yeah, just to wrap up, um, I didn't wanna have, when that whole leak was happening, I didn't wanna have those people without water. And so, the only way we could have done that would have been a hot tap, you know, live, a light tap. Um, so they're not all boil water notices and all that, and so, that would, that'd be a special, if you didn't call it.
Yeah.
So, that has to be considered too, if we are tapping that main, can disrupt service to everyone else.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay.
It should be at their car.
Right.
Did you have a comment, Linda?
My only comment is that we need to put this on the list, uh, work session, or just a list to, to.
Have a meeting with.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So, shut up, you wanna shut off the parcel, cuz the colors kinda throw them, so.
So, oh, yeah, they put, did cyan for that one, but.
So you're where your cursor is, that line that's along the highway there, that, yep, that's all private.
So this is where, so just make sure everybody's kinda on the same page, the broken line, the line that broke recently came off here.
Yeah.
It broke right there, um, where it seems to be that all this was kinda done at the same time, so that line breaking out and rotting. May indicate that there are similar issues in, in here, this line comes across here, my real question I was gonna ask when I was. Is, so we're responsible, as far as I understand, to right here, but no further, on this line.
Correct.
So this private line that may or may not potentially fail, isn't under our liability.
It's not our line.
It's not our line, not our problem, um, so we really don't have anything we have to take actionably. As far as our own liability, but what we're talking about is giving these people a heads up, hey, by the way, that line may not be in the greatest condition. You should think about what you're gonna do, and then at that point, we have two options, run from here. Chuck was talking to me about running off of this line, or there's, and this is saying it's a four inch in silver smith. Whether or not we can be certain on that, I guess is to be determined, but that runs to a hydrant back here. And this line, while it stops on the map, does run all the way out to this Brophy development.
Correct.
So all these people here are possibly at risk of a sudden line failure. But my big question is liability, cuz to talk about whether or not this line goes under the road, is it the town's problem or not?
Yeah.
Is the town liable if that line blows under the road? If not, then we really can't expect to do anything. Ourselves, unless, as far as I'm concerned, all this is annexed.
I mean, I think, uh, since you brought up the A word. Uh, you know, right now, they're basically grandfathered in with their current setup. But if that setup needed to change, then that could trigger the, the need for annexation, because now. We're gonna have to run a new line, or somebody will have to run a new line, but then it'll connect to our system. And so, uh, you know, the.
It's better, cheaper. Uh, or, let, let, let us hear us going to do things in advance.
Yep. Yep, so that's a, a discussion that we can have in that meeting. So, um, I don't know, I think this is a pretty good stopping point, does anyone have any last points for this one?
The one thing, um, I don't know, you, we're gonna have kind of a discussion. With all the property owners, is that kind of the gist of it, is that we're gonna let them know if any wants?
Yeah, and, and just give them a heads up, and then we can also, um, talk about, I guess, our contingencies in that event as well.
Yeah.
Okay, great, let's move on to, um, Engineer D.
Yep, so this is the first payment to Quinn Construction for our new north water tank. Um, the, uh, water tank manufacturer had a deposit that they required, put in, paid that deposit, so he's just asking to get reimbursed. Um, the, the amount is thirty-two thousand, six, forty-seven, point three six.
Okay, it's all make the motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Into seconds, any discussion on this one? Hey, no discussion, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, motion carries, um, I need to sign some paperwork, and so. Let's go ahead, and it's almost eight o'clock anyway, let's go ahead and take a recess, come back at eight, or sorry.
It's only seven.
Yeah, you're right, okay, let's take a recess, come back at, at seven fifty-five. Must be on central time. I didn't even go anywhere.
Almost, there is some, still, there is some.
So I don't need to do anything on this one?
That's for us, you give that to Terry.
Okay, this is our copy.
That's, that was the town.
Okay.
I didn't forget about you.
How'd you get something to do that?
Just so you know, I didn't forget about it, I'm not. There's a boy in our house here next to.
Yeah, I guess we want to down here.
Yeah, you know, car wash, you know, all of its cars.
Amy's there, but she doesn't have these up there. This is not American, the ordinance is not American legal, yeah, yeah, but it's still working to some resolutions.
There was only two reservations passed in twenty-two.
So what is this for, Aaron?
That's because there's something, what is it? Fifteen D, no, fifteen C.
Do we have the thing from A D in the package?
No.
I thought Anthony was gonna.
Some utilities were being treated like as far.
Oh, right, yeah.
I did send the message. Off to look again on that.
All right. All right, you guys, ready? So we'll reconvene this meeting and. And I guess it is six fifty-seven, huh? We did a lot in that first hour, didn't we? Alrighty, let's move on to planning and zoning A with the permit, and then I guess we can do like a ghost B. Because the, we have a complaint here that addresses this permit, so I think we could probably take care of those at the same time. Instead of going to complaints, and then we can, this, we kind of have the discussion all encompassing on the. Permit approval and the addressing the complaint at the same time, but we'll see how the board feels. So anyways, so the permit is for. Six, seven, eight.
Neil told me, he, he gave an update on that in the background, I guess he had some kind of. Family function, you know, so, you just filled me in, so I guess this is kind of a demolition permit and retro. In retrospect. And so it's sort of addressing a building, a structure that was demolished at three ninety Manning. So now we're sort of after the fact, receiving that permit. So that's what we're trying to, I guess it's one of those. Sicilian build the house and pull a permit for window replacement.
Well.
Because it works in Sicily, I don't know.
Yeah, so you know, my understanding was as well that there was kind of even a question as to whether or not a permit should even be. Pulled for this one, and Terry, did you have something you'd like to say on that?
Well, I did go back and look, we had done one in twenty-four and in twenty-three. And had done a, when you look in the ordinance, it does say that.
No matter the square footage on demolition? Okay.
Let me pull it up on number.
Yeah, if you can, and Donna, I saw you there, I was getting to you.
Well, our complaint form. That building was tore down before we have approved the permit.
Right.
And I, as a joint landowner, I didn't see the building go down, but I seen him haul the. And also on, I don't know if this was where to mention it, but also there was not a. One call made to dig. Poles for these trees that they put in, well, they put fifteen of them in the grill, and there was not a one call made for that. And we have a complaint from a citizen.
Okay.
Is the structure happening, you know, if the property is visible?
He's looking at that, Linda, did you have a comment?
I don't, I've never seen.
Three ninety, it says on there.
So we got that table here.
Okay, I'll look in a second.
I guess my other comment is. We all need to play by the same rules. Had that been a different citizen, I know what would have happened, and it's not do as I say. Do as I say or do as I do, anyway. I, I don't think it was handled properly, and I think they should be fine.
But. Okay, Linda, did you have a comment?
Well, I. A building permit for a shed that is under a hundred and sixty square feet is only an informational permit. Is that correct?
Under two hundred, I think.
Okay, so, so my reasoning is that if you can have an informational for that size of a building. Why can't you have an informational demolition, demolition also? I mean, I, I don't know what the rules say that we've had them before, I see that.
It does say major structures, but it doesn't give a size.
It does not give a size for a major structure, so, I mean.
While you're gathering your thoughts, we'll, we'll have Aaron go.
The one, the one thing I can think of why you would want a blanket demolition permits is because demolition may involve. Digging, striking the ground, I think probably a part of it is making sure that if there's something in the ground under it. That has already kind of been identified and addressed, you know, like if we get a permit, all right, I'm gonna demo this. Oh, all right, well, by the way, there's a water line under there, so be careful kind of thing, that's kind of why I would see a demo permit being kind of. A blanket thing rather than a high size thing. That's the only real thing I have.
Jerry, my comment is, going back to what Terry mentioned, is that. People have had permits in the past for that, and we have done that, so that, and the rating interpretation doesn't talk about the size. And then going back to what Brenda is saying, we don't want to, Jerry, do the thing of trying to change. And do something different on this one than was done in the past.
Agreed, I, I would agree with you on that.
That was, so the question is to whether this was really needed or not, if, if the bathroom was needed, was bathroom was done? I don't, that's not the question, the, that what's on the table right now is a fact that the work was done. Prior to the permit being approved.
Trying to pull up the one instance here, I got it. So it's not as easy to do as it was previously.
We know what, it says a need by a shed. Type of use addition, type of construction. No, sorry, type of use accessory, type of construction wood. I'd be, see the picture of one. Run on the back property, is that it? Right next to the garage? It isn't bad, is it? There's this other little thing, looks like a treehouse or something.
Yeah, this is supposed to be open, it was over behind the house.
Yeah, does say major structures.
Well, I guess the big thing is. It hadn't been approved before they did it. Is what I think everybody is questioning.
Yeah.
You can't, you know, I mean, if you're going to turn it, you know, pare it down, why even apply for a permit?
But when they planted all the trees, shouldn't they have called like eight-one-one to check this? Because when you plant trees, they have to be so deep.
I understand, this limit is to the item on the agenda, which is the permit and the complaint.
That has to go along with it, all I need is, it was done right at time when the demolition was done.
Well, yeah, but the, the complaint and the permit is on the demolition only, so let's just try to keep the issues kind of segregated. So we can keep the conversation moving, did you have any further comments, Linda?
The comment I would like to make is to, again, put this, make sure we go through this ordinance. Because the definition of major needs to be defined. And so I just want to make sure that we don't, you know, we get so busy doing things, I don't want to forget. So if we have that on a list somewhere, so we can get to it.
Yeah, I mean, I understand what everybody's saying, we kind of had a rash of these while we were here, trying to get everything figured out. I mean, I don't know if you all, I'm sure you guys remember, there's been a few permits like this, it'd be kind of after the fact, and. I mean, it's not, it's not something that I would like to see the town do on a regular basis, you know, especially if we. If and when we get our developments started in here, we're gonna have to really look at things really closely. Aaron, did you have something you want to, want to add?
Yeah, I'm just kind of trying to build a timeline here, the permit dated the sixth, the staff report is dated the tenth. Do you know, Anthony was, did Neil get the, this information before it was actually? When was this, do we have a date of when the actual demolish, the place?
It was that, and it, the permit was, it was turned in too late to have it on the agenda. Then meeting on Tuesday night, so.
So even the staff report goes down after, you know, what it was, after the demolition, demolition occurs. Anthony, is there anything you would want done before demolishing? Inspected, looked at, checked?
Yeah, I mean, well. Sometimes it's nice if they pull a permit and they send a picture with the demolishing. We could see if it was actually, because that, it could be that one building, I don't know if I'm close to that, was actually an encroachment setback. So now we clean up that issue. So, you know, it's, it's just a matter of knowing what it is, and even a sketch of what they're, they're buying to. Just so we know how it could impact neighbors or public utility. And then obviously, the, the one call needs to be done, that's free. And it, it's actually, well, covers them from liability, if it fell on something or whatever. Then it's already been kept, put out there, and that would also notify the town, because water and sewer would come to us. If they do a one call, so.
Now, is there anything you would want to do in this case right directly?
In hindsight, I mean, it's already gone, and I don't think we have any water main breaks or any issues there. I don't think it fell on any other properties or anything, so probably was done fine, just fine. I don't know if it had asbestos in it, they checked, no, not applicable. So that would have been the other thing, is if there wasn't a payment required for asbestos. That would come into play in a demolition. They have to dispose of it properly, proper, proper chain of custody for that. But in hindsight, there's nothing we can do, so. In terms of, from an engineering standpoint.
Okay, uh, Jerry, uh, going back again to, in the past, based on that regulation, uh, buildings of that similar size, even though it's not defined in there, people have had to get permits, and they've had to comply with the permit, and they had, they didn't do the work until afterwards. People know what the requirement is, especially if you've been around for twenty-five years, ask board members. Uh, they know what the requirement is, you do not start. And we can go back history-wise, and we can look that this is a repeat thing that's happened in the past.
Okay, uh, Dan?
You know, I'm, I'm just really appreciative of all the attention that we can bring to the community as this situation arises. And, you know, it was awful amusing that the previous board wanted to streamline all of this stuff. And there was many occasions that permits came in for under a hundred and eighty square meters, like was before, and were treated by the clerk, as well as the finance officer, as informational permits, and only put on the agenda as an informational permit. You know, as far as, uh, any preparing involved, I guess, you know, we should look at an engineer's aspect, an AK. The roof had fallen in on, and was sitting on, uh, old timbers as far as being removed as an eyesore for buildings that are being built behind it, and the rest of the debris held up to beautify the area is another thing. And no indications were ever mentioned, as we thought it was an eight by eight informational situation. We filled it out, we paid the permit fee, and removed, uh, the, yeah, there aren't no utilities, of course, in that area. And, you know, as far as streets, well, of course, many, uh, of the other additions we did to the property on trying to beautify it and re-landscape, but, uh, there aren't no utilities back in that areas. Called eight one one on that several times for the carport and border fabric, rock, every other situation, so. But, like I said, I appreciate the amusement from a few of the others, and.
Okay.
Apologize and, uh, ask for the court's forgiveness on this if I miss.
All right, thank you. Uh, so, did you, Terry, did you receive a payment on this one? And was it a cash? Uh, Donna, did you have a?
Yeah, I guess, you know, really what we're trying to stress here is that if one person doesn't have to apply, apply the asking, then why does the rest of the people, and I, that's where the town people are coming from. How come some people get by with not doing it properly? And the other, other ones think they can just do whatever they want? And I think that's what we're really trying to stress.
Okay. Uh, Daniel, do you have a quick comment?
Yeah, and I think if we're gonna go back to that situation, and we'll, sheds that, and then put in the community that have no permits, carports that put in that no permits, water lines that were put in that were done before from this. You know, um, the line of things and precedences, a little bit on down one. And the other circumstance, I'm not saying, I mean, just, oh, just viable situation, but nothing was ever mentioned that we had to wait for approval before we moved it up to the agenda. So I think clarification, in what you're doing on your demolition permits, what you're gonna have for site plans, what you're gonna need in the process, well, that's probably gonna have to raise fees because you're gonna have engineers' costs review on that, and if you're gonna have prior site inspections prior to demolition, there's gonna be costs involved in that. So, uh, I think you've got more than just a circumstance here. If we help enlighten other circumstances that we need to set, I gotta policies and go through, great.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Gary, another quick comment?
Yes, quick comment is, he said that, uh, no one told us, we had to wait to get it through. It is very clear, you submit a permit, and you pay for that permit, you do not accomplish that work. It's actually on the, that was an older, uh, permit, but on the permit that's out on the, on the set right now. And that's the way it is, you do not do the work until it is approved. All the other stuff, beautification, good, I mean, I've seen the trees here, and I said, but man, I wish I could afford things like that. You know, it's not, it's nice and beautiful. And the fact that the tree, the, the thing came down, and it was, you know, there's, you know, now there's, uh, uh, people living on that site now. The fact that he decided to take it down and make it look better and stuff, I mean, that's all great. But the, the, what, we just need to look at what, what's on the table right now. What's on the table is, there was, it was submitted, and then the work was done before it was done. There, in the past, there's been, yeah, we might go on to the past, but we just, that's what's on the table right now.
Okay, uh, Aaron?
Uh, definitions under the ordinances, structure major, all structures other than minor structures. Structure minor, a structure with a finished value of less than one thousand dollars, or a detached structure used for storage, playhouse or similar usage which does not exceed one hundred and sixty square feet in area, or a fence not over six feet high, or retaining wall not over four feet high, or an attached deck not over one hundred and sixty square feet in an area, and not more than thirty inches above grade, or a platform walkway or driveway, not over thirty inches above grade, or a window awning supported by an exterior wall, and not exceeding more than fifty-four inches from the exterior wall. So it was an eight by eight shed that's a beautiful sixty-four square feet. It is technically a minor structure, therefore not required to have a demolishment permit, uh, demolition permit under the ordinances.
Okay.
So, um, um, yeah.
Well, so, um. So.
Well, but, and just, and, so when I looked at Beacon, I was trying to figure out, it only, it only lists a twelve by sixteen shed on that property. And so I pulled the file, and that was, that was built in ninety-one. They only show a structure of a hundred and ninety-two square feet, doesn't show an eight by eight, so I don't know, that was built later, and we just, I don't know, there was nothing.
Yeah, just to get put in.
Yeah.
Well, uh, I mean, it sounds like they didn't even have to put a permit in. And so I think technically, if we do want to do demolition permits, then we should, um, figure out what size of structure, or maybe, uh, have a, a location determinator, if that's even a word. You know, if, if the, if the structure is actually smaller than, than the, uh, than the cutoff, but it's in a location, like maybe we have to do, uh, a, a demolition permit no matter what, just to get the call triggered, or something like that, just to make sure that we're not creating problems. But at least, right now, it doesn't look like that this permit even needed to be built, uh, built out for the ordinances, so. Uh, Mark, did you have a quick comment?
Yeah, um, this definitely, generally, if there's no permanent foundation, it's not, it wouldn't be. They probably wouldn't have ever even get a permit for it. Uh, there's not really a tear down, there's not really a demolition.
Right.
It's just moving a portable building at that point. I'm afraid we're going just maybe a little too, too far on a, on a this.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was no permanent foundation, so it was never attached, there was no utilities at risk, there was never any.
Right, uh, Linda, did you have a quick?
Yes, um, for clarification for myself, um, I have, I have put trees in my yard without getting a di- digging permit. And I built a shed, which I did get, um, permit for, that is under a hundred and sixty square feet. And I know there's no foundation under it, because I built it. I guess I'm, the clarification I want is, if I tear that down, or if I plant a tree, do I need a permit? I mean, this is. I mean, I, I know where my water lines are, you know, I know where my electrical lines are.
Well, yeah, I think.
No, not everybody does, I understand that, but, but I do.
I, I think this is a, a thing probably that we need to move to a work session. And then if, if this is something we need to hash out, and, and, uh, get the ordinance updated to kind of capture maybe some what ifs, to make sure there's not future problems created by people that, that may not already know where the lines are in their yard, or like that, so. Uh, Jerry, did you have a quick comment?
Yeah, it's kind of with, with Linda there, uh, you don't need, in order to have to have a digging permit or grading permit, you have to, uh, either put in utility lines, greater, you know, less than fifty feet of utility line, you can do without a permit. You grade less than five thousand square feet, wouldn't be a ten by, you know, a fifty by a hundred feet, so you wouldn't need that. But as far as the, the, and you've talked about depth, and you know what your buildings are, or according to the South Dakota, and I think you guys have a copy of that, if, if you go below twelve inches, you have to call, even if it's on your own property. You have to call one eight, or one eight one one.
Okay.
That is, that, that is the lies.
Well, I think we're getting off on the eight one one thing again, and we're.
One other thing is, being that it isn't needed, I don't, as far as, I, I agree, you know, no fine needs to be done. The thing is that the, the permit was submitted, and then the work was done before the submit, permit, permit was approved.
Right, so.
So I, I think it's answered it now, so it's.
Yeah, so, um, anyways, um, I see your hand back there, Dan, but, I mean, since there's no permit required, and you guys did pay per, permit fee, would you guys like to get the refund for that permit?
That was my question.
Okay, so, um, I guess I'll just make the motion to, uh, refund Mr. Holesworth his permit application fee for permit number here, permit twenty twenty-five dash twenty, because it was a unnecessary demolition permit. So do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second that, and then there's a couple of questions.
Okay, Linda, seconds, um, did you have a couple of questions, Linda?
Anthony, have his hand up first.
Oh, I thought, yeah, Anthony.
So the only thing I'll say is, like, uh, if anyone that's thinking that, you know, there is certain thresholds and things for demolition, so the best thing you can do for yourself is take a picture of it, everybody either has a camera, or knows somebody that has a camera. Take a picture of it, and then at least you got evidence that of what you demolished, like, uh, uh, Harry said, you know, twelve by sixteen is a hundred and ninety-two, so eight by eight isn't, but at least then you got yourself covered.
Yeah, just as a general.
It's falling down, and it's an emergency, right, so, and help it down to the ground, right? But then you got evidence of what you demolished, so.
Okay.
What you wanted to watch.
All right, well, thanks for that, um, so the motion on the floor is to, uh, refund the twenty-five dollar, um, permit fee. So, uh, Linda, did you have another?
I, I would like to make a comment to the Holesworths. Um, I understand that, um, your company and, and you do things according to the weather, and according to how much staff you have, and all the other jobs you do, and, and I get all that. I would just like to, uh, ask you to be more careful, and try to get your permits in on time beforehand, thank you.
Yeah, all right, um, any further discussion on the, the refund, Aaron?
Uh, the, the motion is to refund, do we, does it need to be included that we're dismissing the permit, and?
Um. I don't know, does it?
Uh, yeah, so that it's like done, like.
I mean, it's entered into the system as a permanent number, so that's probably a good point, so.
So I'll make, um, motion to amend to the following. Um, motion to dismiss permit number twenty twenty-five dash twenty, and refund the associated permit fee.
Okay, I'll second that motion to amend. Any discussion on the motion to amend? Nope, all those in favor of amending the original motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, three ayes, one abstention, motion carries. So the original motion reads as follows. Oh, wait till Terry's done writing.
The original one?
Yeah, ma'am.
Was.
The, the, the new, uh, the, the amended motion, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so Aaron amended the motion, Cal seconded, to dismiss permit twenty twenty-five dash twenty, and refund the associated permit fee.
Okay, very good. Um, so then that's the motion on the floor, or is there any, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Put it in, too. Three ayes, one abstention, all right, very good. Uh, so, moving on, Public Works, got, uh, a streets, street light repairs, water and sewer department updates. So Aaron, you're, uh, kind of the streets guy, right?
Oh, yeah, um, just kind of keeping an eye on how the riprap has been done so far, it's holding up. And it seems to be, the next step there will be go, going over it with road base. Um, haven't done much new with the streets recently, but if you want to do more EPM before winter, um, get some more of the asphalt, potholes, patch up, especially, I think there's, um, what's the one that's kind of pat the asphalt from Ferguson Street?
McDermott.
McDermott, yeah, to get some of those deeper, where it's packed work, kind of sort of asphalt, just fill them with EPM, so they don't get washed. Um, other than that, streets is, it's good.
Okay, Aaron, I think we're gonna talk about fairground place, that thing.
Oh, um, yeah, fairground place, uh, now that, um, Rob is gone, um, we need to look at fixing that road. Um, personally, I'm not entirely sure how much we want to do unless we're gonna do it. And I kind of see, feel like we need to start actually crowning our roads. And that one, a lot of its issues, I think, come from the fact that it's not crowned. And, um, that's a bit more involved than anything we normally do. And so I think we need to, I mean, work with Anthony, we need to put together a plan to actually turn that into a proper road before we just throw, we throw gravel on it, and it washes away, it splashes out, there's no, there's no escape for the water. Those ditches aren't in the greatest condition either. There's a lot of work that needs to be done on that road.
So it'd have to be a project there.
Yeah, um, so, but for now, um, I want to go through and fill in the deeper stuff with the riprap again. But because it's a whole road, that's probably something that wants somebody to go do a good threat, road base coating. Um, but again, it's like, it's a difference, I mean, do we go ahead and, and start looking at a serious rework of the road, or fill in it, fill in the puddles, and then crowning it with riprap, and then putting road base over top of it? Or do we just fill in the potholes, and then put more road base down? What are we gonna do at this point, I'm not sure. I don't, I don't know if crowning the road is a project we want to take on before the end of the year. So I'll just fill in the holes with riprap, and then we need, uh, a full resurfacing of that road.
Are there, are the holes deep enough for the riprap out there? Have you been out there recently?
Yeah, yeah, there are a few. Not, not as many, um, it was not that long ago that, um, uh, Ferguson interruption, they went through and did some work right before the county fair, and that did, that actually did a lot. Yeah, but it's, it's, that was still road base, and it splashes out. And those holes, once they're there, they're there, and they just keep splashing out.
I just went down to the lagoon just last week, was it, Terry? Terry, yeah, and, um, that road is not bad. I mean, it's not as bad as some of our roads, that's for sure. And, and that is because of the work that Ferguson done on it, you know, that, so. I think that it, I think that needs to just go in with all the roads, and we need a good plan for the whole town. And so I, my suggestion would be to fix it for now, um, easy, cheaper fix for now, and then we need to do a whole road plan for the entire town.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. Uh, Jerry, did you have a comment on the streets?
Yes, the question I was gonna ask is, how much is left on the street budget right now?
Yeah, you don't have it with you?
I didn't do any financials.
The reason I was asking.
Quite, quite a bit, honestly.
The reason is, is that's what I thought when I looked at last time. So it might be a good time, because if you don't use that money, it don't carry over into the next year. So then we would be, happen to use it out of money, and then this money would just, it just kind of goes away. And so, uh, it might, I mean, it doesn't go away, you keep, it's. I mean, it doesn't go away, you, you it's, it's already budgeted to be done on the roads. And if we don't do, if we have the money to do it now, and we don't do it, well, I'll have to come out of next year's budget. So I think it might be looking, work, looking to see what it takes to, uh if there was a mouth to actually come in and have someone crown it and grade it and, and do the work to it.
And do you have an estimated cost for what you think that would be?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know what that is.
I mean, we, we only have what, like twenty-two, twenty-eight thousand something in the streets right now, or in that, in that vicinity?
So we're, with where we're at, there's a fairly big portion of the streets budget left over, but there's, there's some, I forget which line, line item, one line item is fifteen thousand and we haven't touched that because it's apparently something that the lights come out of there, um, no, no, no comes out of there. So there are some others we haven't, we kind of left it alone because we know that's an expense that is gonna hit before the year.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, but there, I would say probably, probably fifteen to twenty thousand dollars we go get them, so.
And I think that cost wise, I just had uh ninety-two uh truckload seventeen ton uh truckloads all uh had it all spread out on the site and it cost twenty-four thousand.
How many truckloads?
A hundred and, oh, a little over a hundred truckloads. And then that's, that's spreading this, that and it. Uh, it is something you could look into. I mean, you, uh Aaron has points of contact you can go to and just ask and say, hey, this wrote this long, what would it take to?
Um another point mentioning the residuals in the street budget and how not wasted. So we do have a stockpile, we started building. We could probably fit a lot more there, but one thing that I've been thinking about, talking to citizens about, and this is definitely something we'd have to run by Anthony and maybe even our new attorney. But um I thought, I've been asked so many times by citizens where they can get gravel to patch up their driveway. And I want to see if there's a path forward where we could have some sort of an enterprise system to where we could have the town have stockpiles of both rip rap and road base to where citizens could buy out of that stockpile. Because citizens don't necessarily want a full, full dump. They might want a, a scoop, uh um, a uh bobcat bucket full and that's all they want. I don't know what's, you know, I don't know if that's something that uh a town would be allowed to do.
Controlling that would be the issue.
Yeah, well, that, it would be like come in and we have a certain person that they, that would be the one to go out there and get a scoop and deliver it kind of thing.
Yeah, that would be careful.
Uh I saw your hand up, Chuck. I saw your hand up again, Kathy, and then Connie, are, are these all streets comments? All right, let's make them quick and then uh, then let's move on real quick.
I put like fifteen ton in there, it's, it's a hole of one thing or other. I, I don't think to without going, you can pass that road has no uh ditches whatsoever. So it's taking on a very major project and we'll be cutting ditches, pull that dirt in, the crown road, then you're gonna have mud till it's no more.
It wouldn't be on the earth.
You know, the water, the dirt that comes out of the ditches will have to be literally hold off because you can't blend it in with that. Uh it's, it's the work that I did on it for quite a while. People there are satisfied if the holes are filled and that's, you get too carried away, then you're working with dust control and then it expands into bigger, bigger, bigger stuff. I think just doing a routine maintenance on the potholes in there, it's not be surprised uh everybody's concerned.
Yep, let's have a couple more quick comments. I mean, we don't have any items on the agenda for business under this topic, so you know, we can do some uh quick discussion and Kathy?
Uh I was just, this is Franzy. Um I was wondering if they got those holes, or I mean, Aaron, sorry. They got those hole down by Holesworth, you know, around that corner in there. There's those big nape holes there.
I wanna dump stuff in there. Yeah, yeah, I wanna fill that up with rip rap even though it would just be a band-aid, just try to stand on the tide a little bit.
Cause I noticed at the end of the day that was a lot of water in there and it just kept prodding underneath the there.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's only gonna get worse until we.
Well, to that end, if there was, if there was anything we could try to use up the rest of the street budget with that doesn't necessarily require a lot of forecasting or intense planning is recutting ditches. Um you know, finding somebody, somebody, small dirt work operation who wants to come in and cut our ditches. It would be a better way to burn up our budget than just about anything else. We have serious.
All right, let's go Connie and then a final comment from Linda on streets and move on.
I was just gonna say it's fairground road. It is looking nice right now, but that last half inch rain, it does not take much water and it takes it on and it, you sink in, in places, it needs some good base rock in there, I think, but.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh Linda?
I was just gonna suggest that um Terry put it on our calendar for the, for the first meeting in December to check the balance on roads and then we'll know how much money we have and maybe we can use it up so that we don't lose it.
Okay, very good. All right, moving along to street light repairs. Chuck, did you have anything for that?
Uh everything seems to be working. Uh and like I said before, I do have one of the devices stock for uh Main Street and the highway seventy-nine. Um we've got a couple allies that are staying on nice day and uh I guess I got to investigate that a little bit whether we're paying for that or it's on the customer's ear.
Oh.
We got a couple of them that are staying on.
Okay.
So that's it on the lights.
Okay, thanks. Um Anthony, did you have any water sewer department updates?
Well, we covered the, some of the issues that are, uh that we had leaked, but um um I think that everything is falling under the other categories except for our DWSR. I'm drinking water alone. Um we need to get out our competitive seal bid, our request for proposals, so we gotta, I have two of those I'm preparing, one for the Madison well, one for the um uh WRT, the water treatment technology. Um finally, we got V A N R to give us guidance on how we'll break down the bids. So they want us to do those competitive seal bids, get them out, select the two tech, the technology and the well, drillers, so that way, um that's, then we can do regular bids on the remaining components, so trying to get that up. Now that the game's done, I more attention on that.
Absolutely. And so um Chuck, did you have any additions to water sewer, sewer department updates?
Not really, the, you know, jet or truck. Took the cylinder off on my thing to send me a repair at this point. Apparently, we'll work on the batteries, but I don't know if they will hold charge, say they charge them, but I don't know if they'll hold. And so, once you get that cylinder back there, the truck is actually able to do some work. Uh we can't back, but we can jet. Be some of that work, uh culvers and things like that can be cleaned with, with that gun. And we've got some of the plugs along the way. And one may do that with the water, it takes another route rather than going through the cord. So it's just uh, it's to be able with Aaron and you know, to file a list, what we want to do is trying to get it.
You want, okay, uh Aaron, did you have a?
Uh yeah, better question. Yeah, on the um back truck, yeah, I took the batteries out Friday night, um and I conditioned, spent the weekend, but they're on my conditioning laboratory, so they're, they're back to life now. Um the hydraulic cylinder, we're gonna need the, the um paperwork on the repair shop and everything else, just so we can file that. Um but the, I did talk to Justin today who ran the truck up in Hill City, so um there's an issue with the hydraulic motor that drives the reel that feeds in and out the jet line. And the issue that you said they were having, which was the original hydraulic issue, aside from the leaking cylinder, is that, that doesn't run steadily and will jump and jerk and cause the line to unravel while it's still on the reel and kind of become a mess. And every time they run the line, they ran it, they would end up having to feed it all the way out in order to wind it all the way back in. So aside from the cylinder, once their cylinder's fixed, I'm gonna have to go out there and diagnose this, this um hydraulic motor and make sure it's something we're either gonna be able to repair very quickly or have a workaround in place before the cameras get here in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, let me know when you are doing that, I'll try to carve out some time. Yeah, yeah. Uh did you have a, something you wanna, wanna add, Anthony?
I was just gonna mention uh locates for water, so we need to kind of consider what we're gonna do to have a look here. Um I'm trying to see if we can somehow do something where I'll split the cost with Apple Springs, they have a similar situation. And we do have some mean that has no tracer wear on it. And so uh that's a bigger thing that I'm gonna try to resolve in February with our Detroit office, that, to see if we can share, bot, Benish can buy a GPR unit and then share it and try to figure out how we can, you know, tackle those things like on a scheduled basis so that then we'll survey those in and we'll use our Silver Smith to actually be doing the locating on stuff that has no tracer work. So it's a, it's an item, I don't know if it should be like a retention item, but I mean, we're going into the winter and that's when we always worry about water main breaks and so it's just something to, to know about. Um we don't have locator here to put on and sound out the water main. So and sewer is never a problem because it's man, a man, but water turns underground, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on to um open work orders. We do have a.
Meters, one of the fuel we had, obviously it's working, but it still needs to be addressed.
And as far as the uh work orders that we have in Silver Smith, some, uh some of the, some of those are probably done. If, if you look on the next page from the work orders that uh previous list outside of Silver Smith. Uh so if you can, Chuck, when you have some time, like some of them are locate requests and they're, I'm sure you get right on it when you get it, so. And it says it's uh progress is not started, so if you can go through, just grab a paper copy of this list, go through and just check off which ones you did and then the date completed and then uh we'll find somebody to enter it in the computer.
We can, I mean, there's a couple of those, uh relocation of the being.
I have it here.
I know one that uh we have to go under the house and actually busy promote the rear wires and that stuff, so pretty much you would have their after. I don't think there's any that we can't be there, maybe steams.
There was a couple this time. There was another one, I can't remember which one, but so it was.
If there are issues with meters, let's get them put on this work order list, just so we have a record of them and when the problem was first noticed and then uh if so if you're turning in paperwork orders for everything that's on the list from Silver Smith, then we'll just have to look at those and cross-reference them to uh to get them cleared out or Silver Smith. I mean, there's, there's a few of them on here that are completed, but some of them say not started. Like, and there's a few of them that are locate requests, so I don't know if you have a specific paper form for that, but.
For locate.
Yeah, for locates. Okay, all right, so we'll just follow up and see uh what we can do on that. So as far as streets contract work, I'm gonna, um I, I talked to Dan about that tonight. We're gonna meet and go over the numbers from a previous uh contract that we had with them and then we'll uh get that guy closed out here and then um.
So what is, what, what is this contract about?
Uh well, it was from, what is it, February, something, sometime around February, when we uh contracted with street repair, you remember?
I thought one of them doing anything with was street repair, you know?
Yeah, this one was from February and, and, and covered a, a lot of working stuff that he did, so uh anyways. You know, you know, recall that one. Alright, we can talk about that offline if.
Yeah.
Uh so that one will be taken care of. And then on eight D, the approve the protocol, we're gonna have to move that one to the next agenda because we haven't received uh word back from Rapid on what their protocol is for resident notification when public utilities are being worked on, so.
I'll be in there Thursday morning. Um I made that of my things like already approved, so it's a few minutes, so I should have plenty of time to run and get that notification.
Okay, all right, thanks. Aaron, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, because that, that item does say approve protocols, we need to do a motion to table or anything?
Uh yeah, yeah, let's do a motion to move to the next, the next meeting on November fourth. So I guess I'll make that motion. Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Seconds, okay, any discussion on that one? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. Taking off, Anthony?
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much, Terry.
Next time.
Okay, moving along to law enforcement, abitments and complaints. Michael is not here tonight, so we'll have to move on to Custer County log. I don't see a log here.
We only, we only get it once a month.
Right.
Just get to begin, we got it last meeting, we used to get it the first.
Right. Okay, so.
I will, I just want to note that I did get confirmation today that Eric is going to be in the class starting November twenty-four. The certification class, so we did get, we did get him enrolled in that, so.
Yeah, thanks, Terry. Okay, let's go ahead and. Okay, so item nine C, prove reimbursement claim from animal control volunteer.
That's not in.
It's not in your packet.
I don't have it in the packet.
I can show you. I got a couple of copies. So Tammy had purchased a pair of steel toe boots, I believe. And it told me that Ellen told us she could get that reinforced.
Yeah, I think there's, so I think this stemmed from a conversation that I had with her where um she was talking about things like bite gloves and the pole that you grab a, a dog or something with and you grab them by the neck. And I said, yeah, I mean, if you're buying that type of stuff, uh you know, I think the council reimburs you, but at the same time, I mean, she shouldn't, she shouldn't be the one to do that, you know? And uh I mean, this was just kind of an off-the-cuff conversation, obviously just an opinion. And uh I mean, I think everybody is aware that uh any town expenditures need to come through the board before you can consider them to be paid, so I think it was a, a misunderstanding and probably on my part, I should have been more clear um that it wasn't just for sundry items like boots that could be used for other things other than animal control. You know, um in my mind, I was thinking, you know, she mentioned bite gloves and um the noose type, I don't know what that thing's called, I'm sorry, and things, catchable.
A catch ball.
Catchable, okay, thanks, Connie. Um a catch pole or, you know, maybe a vest with a logo on it or something. But obviously, um at this point, she's a candidate, so um I don't know that any of the uh what do you call it, identification type things should be needed at this time. Donna, did you have a comment?
The, the trick word is volunteer.
Right.
Nobody else at volunteers gets their product or their you volunteer the job because you're volunteering. We're paying, you know, you don't each are not supposed to expect to get paid for it.
Good, thank you, uh Aaron, and then I saw a hand out there.
Yeah, I think um, I think one thing that you kind of pointed to, I think is maybe a misunderstanding.
Yeah, I think um, I think one thing that you kind of pointed to, I think is maybe a misunderstanding is that um. You can do something and then get approval from the board, but it really needs to be, I think, everybody. Everybody needs to understand, things need to be brought to the board before you can ever expect to be. Paid or compensated for them, I mean, sometimes there are things and claims that may seem like we're just. You know, approving a claim, but almost all of this is attached to a contract, resolution or something, it's all. Attached to a board actions, so we can't, we're not allowed to expend money unless. It's attached to some previous board actee.
Right, yeah, and and just to be clear, I wasn't trying to spend money outside of a meeting or anything, it was. Simply a comment made by me, so anyways, uh, Connie?
Well, like what I did with my T and R program, I volunteered my time for four years. I didn't get reimbursed gas or I paid everything out of my pocket and had to be reimbursed for it, I bought my own traps, I did all of that. I never asked for reimbursement, although that time is not in an ordinance where animal control is. So I feel that she probably does need a catch pole. I think certain things like traps or catch poles that the town purchases is town property. She won't be the animal patrol all the time. And if we've paid for those items, they need to belong to the city, clothing items are something. If she wants to use that for her own protection to not be bit by a cat or whatever. You purchase that yourself, the rest of it can, I believe, belongs to the town.
Okay, um.
Aaron. Um, just another, another thing to kind of touch on is um, we are gonna need to dig a little more into. The animal control, uh, I was informed that they um. May actually have certain, even when it comes to handling simply as dogs. When as in the official capacity, may require certain licenses from the state, certain other things. Um, I think, I think we do need to reiterate that this is um. We haven't appointed an animal control officer, we've authorized training of animal control. Officer candidate under the direct supervision of the law enforcement. So that we don't have an animal control officer in town yet that is able to act unilaterally, it's more of just a. Just a very early stages, but yeah, we're, we, we do have a lot more where I've had so many people coming. In the past couple of weeks, this is, we have a lot more to look into before this becomes real official, we have ordinances to dial in and everything else. So I, I don't know what we're gonna do on this, though, as far as this item, do we?
Well, we can do a motion to approve and then just um. You know, let it fail and then that'll record the board's decision on it.
Could do that.
So I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve and then any further discussion we can do under the motion. Any uh second. A second on the. Okay, so um, did you have another comment, Aaron? Jerry, I saw your hand up a while ago, did we cover that already?
Uh, just one thing is that, you know, like Connie says, it belongs to town, but we need to have an inventory of it when Slade uh Eve took over as the. As the sheriff, you know, not as a marshal, we know, you know, there was no inventory. Donna and I went down there, looked and there was no inventory to even match it, so. I really think anything that we're doing for the law enforcement or just here, we need to keep a tight inventory because. It would, it's auto, you need to know what we purchased, where it's at and if you have. We had stuff that we couldn't find, even if we had, so.
Okay, yeah, thanks for that, so um. I guess uh, any further discussion on this one? Okay, seeing none, uh, are there any in favor of the motion to approve reimbursement claim? Okay, uh, any opposed? Or opposed? Motion fails, so. Take that one out, complaints, uh, are, are you guys satisfied that we addressed the complaint earlier with the discussion? Okay, so um. See a number or anything on there? But um, I mean, should we do a motion to address it? Address the complaint, just. It's kind of a moot point anyways, but just to say that uh. That the complaint addressed uh by.
Can we just do mint recording in the minutes statement?
Yeah, I guess I'll just make a quick motion to just say that we addressed the complaint. Regarding the demolition permit. And no action was needed. So make the, I'll make that motion, uh, is there a second? And the seconds, any discussion on that one, any discussion out there on that? Okay, very good, all those in favor? Another abstention? Okay, three eyes, one abstention, motion carries, so do we have any compliments on here? Not necessarily for the board, but anybody in town, I think um. I think the last time we did this, there was a compliment from somebody in the town to somebody in the town. So that's, that's always a welcome addition to. Jerry?
Those trees look real nice.
Okay, well, thanks, Jerry, a- any other compliments? It's kind of a new thing, so uh, I don't know, maybe, maybe we'll have some more next time, just keep it in your mind as you're driving around, Connie.
Really appreciating how quickly the meetings are moving along, that's very nice.
Alrighty, yes, ma'am, thank you. Okay, very good, and we have any other compliments? I'd, I'd like to compliment the audience for being participatory and. And to, you know, help move things along and and give us ideas and. And uh, you know, so thank you, thank you all for coming and, and very good, I'm glad you're here. So uh, look, okay, let's move on to legal, approve town attorney to review operating agreements for liquor licenses. Uh, would somebody like to make that motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Donna makes the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Aaron, second, so discussion on that one? Like to open up discussion?
Is this something? It's kind of a boilerplate thing, I mean, we've done it for a long time, do we need to spend attorney funds? To do that, if we copy the last ones?
Well, there were some edits done uh by Mr. Hague before. And there was a question from one of the uh people on the substance of that regarding liability insurance. And so we would at least have that question answered and then if there's anything else that he thinks we need to address. We can um get that done, man. Yeah, uh, Mr. Service?
Yeah, I mean, from, from what I can tell, it's been pretty much copy pops the operator agreement for twenty years.
Yeah.
So things may have changed in a way that do justify. A little bit, a fresh set of legal eyes to make sure we're still within, we're still on the rails.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you, um, is there any other discussion on this one? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? All right, okay, four eyes, motion carries, yeah, very good, on the next one, opinion on the back trunk. Back truck operational agreement, so, Aaron?
Uh, yeah, so it's something citizens have mentioned, something I've thought about, um. This, this new truck of ours is um, it's a pretty serious piece of equipment, capable of doing a lot of good, but also capable of. Possibly having things go wrong, um, I feel like um, it would be a good idea for us to have the attorney. Kind of give us an opinion on how we should make sure we're covered. Um, liability wise and everything with the operators, especially if it's gonna be a subcontractor operating. It is technically town property, it's a town, a piece of town equipment, a very serious piece of town equipment, but we don't have. Any formal town employees that could or would operate it, so I just think it'd be good to make sure um. There aren't any weird special licenses out there we don't know about that are required to operate any aspect of the system that um. We get. Pointed in the direction of having an operation, operator, operational contract, so that whoever is operating. Was contracted to do so and that any insurances, you know, that are just basically all the questions that. We don't have answers to because we've never had something like this before.
Right, no, that's, I think that's a good idea. So um, do we need to get an approval to get that opinion on the next agenda on November fourth?
Um, that's, that's one thing I'm not sure about, I know there's the, that issue of notice, but this doesn't, this is more of an administrative thing, we're not taking action. We're asking for an attorney to do something, so I don't know if we need, I don't think we need it to have advanced notice, I think adding it to the agenda tonight. Was sufficient. But I'm not sure, according to that review we did on the open meeting law thing, right, it kind of sounded like. Yeah, you should post the agenda, but it's not really official until it's.
Yeah, and if we're kind of under the time crunch where we need to get that done. Before November tenth.
Yeah.
Need to have somebody running it before November tenth. Yeah, that's probably uh, probably coming up against the clock there, uh, Jerry, did you have an input on that?
Yeah, uh, it came up when I was on the board and we went to the uh. The municipal league and they, they're the head of the municipal league and what they came back is. If it's an emergency time sensitive thing, do it, and that's, this fits into it, and that's what, there's a letter. From the municipal league in, in the files that says that.
Yeah, and they, the, the guidance that came out with, I think in twenty twenty four, is that when the latest packet came out? That, that guidance, that guidance seems to say that it's even less strict than that, it's just, it's recommended to post. I know the town has used it for a long time as, I think, a courtesy to the citizens and everything like that, which I think we should. abide by as much as we can, but I agree with you that this is a time sensitive issue, so. I, I mean, I don't have an issue with making a, a decision on that tonight. So anyways, uh, would you like to make the motion, Aaron?
Yeah, um, I would like to make a motion to request an opinion from Scott James. Regarding the operational. Use of the town backer truck. By private contractor.
Operational use of that. I just dropped by private.
Yeah, do we have a second on that?
Sure.
Linda, seconds, okay, just uh, any further discussion on that one, do you have a question, Donna?
Well, what are you considering a private contractor?
Uh, truck is.
Well, I just, I, I didn't know if you.
Yeah, no, I, I just like.
Insurance and everything, you know.
But so part of it is, the backer truck is nowhere in the current contract. Operating it, running it, all of that is completely. Outside and we never had a big piece of equipment.
Never had a piece of equipment that's town born. A mower, we have a mower.
Oh, that's right, and a small floor.
All right, we're getting off track here a little bit, so um, let's get back on track, so discussion on.
Do we get a second?
Linda, second, discussion on the motion on the floor, which is um, getting the attorney opinion on the back truck operations. Do we have any other discussion, comments, questions on that? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Linda, did you say I? So four eyes, motion carries, so on to claims.
I made the motion, we pay the claims.
Okay, Donna makes a motion, proof claims.
I'll second that.
Aaron, seconds, any discussion on this one? Yeah, you don't see any discussion. Questions? Looked over some, any questions on any of those? So the operations, contract and on-call inspection agreement, Harry, is that um. That's basically one of the yearly payments or the maybe.
So they bill us every time they, they put hours towards that and then I get. That agreement, yeah.
Okay, and now, or are you also tallying it, making sure it's within the?
Yeah, she keeps it tracked and she sends me the bill, like, this is what the, what the original amount was, less this, this is what's remaining, so. Other agreements are like that.
All right, thank you. Okay, any questions, uh, Dev?
That fuel for the martial vehicle, is that going into the town vehicle or is that his vehicle?
Town one, so we have a credit card with um. Corner pantry, that's where he can, he buys his purchases. Just for the town, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, okay, any other questions? All those in favor? All right, motion carries, very good, update from uh, Mr. Service on economic development?
Um, the mixer, that was pretty cool, I think. Quite a few folks made it in there, um, there's, there's a lot of, I didn't stay for very long, but um. It's, it just generally seems to be a very. Uh, growing positivity toward the, the prospects of, of business success in the town and I think um, I think a lot of people are starting to get on board and hopefully we can.
Well, we had some new people that had moved east of town here and that's kind of, I think, what they're trying to get is for the new. New people in the area to come to town and see what. It was, it was nice.
Two months ago, we were talking about things and he looked and he says, how many people live in town? Not one, not one town person. And that dude bought floor and he wouldn't leave it, they were trying to build a town. But nobody would come to it.
Interesting, well, thanks for spearheading that, Dan. Uh, Jerry?
Just one other comment, uh, there's a, a postcard went out uh, to everybody, right? Uh, to, to talk about the, the, the forum for the ambulance and the stuff, everybody's got post, uh, that went out. There's uh.
I didn't get it.
Well, yeah, they just went out today. Or Monday, some of the people have gotten there, I haven't got mine yet, mine might go to some falls and that. There's things posted on the different sites, on the two community sites, there's stuff posted on it. Uh, it's really a good thing that people need to go look at it. Uh, there's actually even on the postcard, it has a, one of those little things called, Aaron?
QR code.
A QR code where you can hit that QR code and it should take you back to uh, from both the uh, community. What about the connects and then they should be able to look on that webpage and I, Leo Van Sandbake is. Doing, putting some packets together so that people can go in there and look at them and, and see what's all the things are, so they can come to the meeting. Ready to ask questions.
And that meeting is Tuesday night at six thirty at the Legion.
Yep, and if you want, no, no, the, the five, the five thirty is at five thirty, they're gonna have a free will. Uh, donation.
Oh, okay.
From five to five thirty, for five to six fifteen and then from six thirty to eight is the actual meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Um, entirely unrelated, but Jerry's talking draw my attention to, I've been working more on the website, um, all twenty twenty three. Documents are now on there, um, and I did start the conversion of the audio to video, um, everything for twenty five is now on YouTube. Um, if it wasn't in video, it's now on an audio, I'm starting the. Conversion on twenty four and I could step back and the process turned out to be really smooth, like, I, I take. A chunk of audio files, put them in a folder, hit a, hit a program I run, it starts up and automatically converts them all to video and then I just have to upload them. So it's going pretty smooth.
Good job.
Um, but yeah, it's. Yeah, so hopefully within a few weeks, I'm doing like a day a week. To work on this, not super saturated, but hopefully maybe by the end of the year, we'll have like three or four years worth of everything at least. And I'll just keep going back as far as I have fine data to put up there, but the new structure of this website, there's no limit on how far back and. With three years of um. Three years of all the documentation, meetings, packets and, and uh. Agendas, we're only at about one point six gigabytes and we have a hundred gigabytes. And, uh, agendas, we're only at about one point six gigabytes and we have a hundred gigabytes on the website. So we won't have any issues being that we're using YouTube for the. For the recordings, we won't have any issues with that volume anymore. So.
Okay, great.
Had the compliment for Aaron.
Thank you all for your years before compliments. Very good. So on to finance office.
Um, so I don't have financial, I know there was a request to do a battery report. And so I did start working on something to kind of maybe show us the revenues. The expenses and then whether our net profit or loss was and. And then I thought I'd give like the balances of all our accounts, but since we're not through with all of October. I'm going to wait and then have that for the November meeting, which will show us in the October. I thought that would be, I apologize, I don't have that first thing.
Oh, that's great. And I know I, I, I told you I'd work, help work on something too. And I actually just got my computer fixed tonight. So.
Well, I kind of just did an Excel spreadsheet to kind of. Start it. So.
Okay, awesome.
But, um, yeah, you bet. And then as far as department updates. I did notice, so we had that, that CD that we, last October, we took the hundred and forty thousand from Preston's water cap that they paid. And we invested it. And I believe the interest was going to pay for maybe some plating or something. And, and I talked to Anthony. So that matures on the twenty fifth of October. So I'm not really sure. I said to Anthony, do we need that money yet? He thought maybe we could reinvest it for maybe six months. So I did do some checking. The best interest rate I could find right now is with Black Hills Federal Credit Union. They have four percent. Or either three, six or nine months. Right now we are. The, the first national, we're earning four point five. So. But the other banquet has three point eight three for seven months. Wells Fargo is three point seven four and three point six four. And then Security First had a three point nine one and a three point eight five. So. Not sure if that's something that we need a motion to.
Will they roll it over at the same bank or the same amount that somebody else is? Is.
No, when I talked to first, first, um, National, because I called them first and we have ten days. From the time it, um, matures. By having till like the November fourth or something.
Okay.
To, um, let them know. We want to take it out. But yeah, like their, their rate right now is. Is only. Three point seven five is what their rate is. So it's.
The best is.
And the best is for with Black Hills Federal. And I did talk to Black Hills Federal Credit because I'm like, we don't have an account there. And they said that was fine. Um, it just requires a business membership. Which is five dollars a month, but they said they actually absorb that cost if we admitted to a CD. So it's the information I had.
Well, I think we should reinvest it.
Yeah.
And we might as well get the best we can get. That's how I look at it.
Makes sense to me.
Money, money to do roads with or to do whatever with.
Yeah. So I mean, let's put that on the agenda for the.
Do you have time to redo it? If we do it on the fourth?
Yeah, how long is there for?
I mean, if we're not going to save with, um. First National, I'll have to draw it out of there.
Mm-hmm.
And then just probably put it in our account and then, and then we can make a motion to open a new CD at Black Hills Federal.
But, but you better make sure that Black Hills Federal's. Four percent holds through November. Because we don't, if it doesn't, we need to either do it before that or. Or stay where we're at or whatever. Yes, if we need to.
And I'm going to be gone.
You're going to be back on the.
Twenty eighth. I'll be back in the office on the twenty ninth. So I can.
You can call the bank though, or. Yeah, that.
Saturday is the twenty fifth. Is when it matures. So, yeah. So, yeah, okay.
Awesome. Thanks for keeping tabs on that, Terry.
And so with that, um, the next item, I've been leaving for our vacation, we gone for a week. Um, Kim is telling me I'm a part-time employee and she just kind of wants to continue that way. I would like to, in the package, you have a schedule of what the hours would be for the office. I just wanted to. And I would post that on the door out here and we'd get on the website. But essentially. Tomorrow, Thursday, she'd work four hours. Friday, we'd close and then Monday, Tuesday, next week. You know, six hours and then. Wednesday, I probably won't come in till later. So I, that's why I put nine to five. And then of course, Thursday, we regular hours and. Great cars.
Need to make a motion on that.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we approve the hours as Terry has stated.
Okay, Don makes the motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Yep.
The seconds with the yep. Um, do we need any discussion on this one, guys?
Everybody pre-check, Mike.
Have a nice, uh, nice list there. So anyways, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. But I have a comment. I'd like, I'd like to thank Terry.
You know.
She took her vacation. Middle week to middle of the week. Most people take it from Saturday through Sunday. So they have, you know, nine days. And I think she did that specifically because it's hard for the town. To get much done without her. And I want to thank her for that. That is dedication to the town. And enjoy yourself.
Yeah.
I am, yeah.
Okay, so four eyes, motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, review the cost of update to fiber optic internet. So.
That was a tougher.
Yeah, I remember and I just didn't get it in the. And that's what, you know, Aaron and I had just talked about, because they, they put the, um. Internet downstairs. But right now we're on DSL and we pay about, I think it's sixty two, ninety, about fifty-three bucks a month. And we can upgrade. To a little higher speed for ninety and then there was a even more higher one that was a hundred and fifty a month.
Yeah, so right now we're on fifty down.
Here it is.
Five up, I think.
Yeah.
Uh, we can go to, um, one hundred up down for ni- uh, ninety dollars or two hundred and fifty up down for a hundred and forty dollars.
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty dollars for two hundred and fifty up down, gate, uh, megabits up down. Um. And like my, I mean, the only point, the one big point I see is like this system is still, um. Uh, record and then upload where this would give us the live stream capacity, but also when we have Teams meetings, when we have people video in. We would get a lot more stability. We wouldn't have the wonkiness that we've had to deal with in the past when we've had somebody try to join via Teams. Um, we also. Have, uh. I don't know, possibility of, if we want to put cameras in different areas around town for like our infrastructure. We would need more met. We would want more bandwidth at that point. Um. So yeah, I don't know. We just, we talked about it and then it landed on the agenda. So here it is.
Uh, and this is through Mount Rushmore?
Yes.
And are we getting a residential rate for them or the?
No, it's a commercial. We're on the commercial.
I would suggest you look at Midco as well.
Okay.
Because personally, um, we. I can't believe how, uh, a town this size has two different fiber optic carriers straight to your house. Down in Ferguson, that's the case. We have, we can either go Midco or Mount Rushmore with fiber line right to my house. And I'm sure it's the same way for my neighbors too. And so, uh. But Midco was cheaper and faster. At least for residential. So they may also do that way for.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can just, well, I'll just do some research and then bring it to the next meeting.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Gary.
Um, Aaron, you mentioned cameras. Is there, would you be able to put cameras, you know, like on a lagoon area?
That's the kind of things I'm thinking about. If we want to get to the point where, where we have our, we have proper security protecting our infrastructure. Our wells, our new, new, our water towers, just things throughout town. Um. And my thoughts for a while kind of have been if we were to do all that, it would, it would be through our marshal now that we have one. So we have. You know, that oversight, um.
Would you be able to pick up, I would say if they had alarms, we'd go out down there. They were running twenty-four hours with zero on their. Their agreement stuff. If something went wrong, alarm, you got to build this. Be on the back and, and, uh, the system where.
Yeah, I mean, we. With technology, we could basically do whatever we wanted to do. And with open source things, we could probably figure out how to do it cheaply. And build our own little mini infrastructure without having to, to get real exorbitant with professionals coming in and, and doing something that. Is way more than we need and way more than we need to pay for.
Yeah, I, that's, you know, that's why I was asking if Aaron would be able to do that. You.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure that he and I could, between the two of us, we could probably do it. But, I mean, for instance, the camera system that he put up. Uh, four hundred bucks, something like that.
Yeah, we ended up like, uh, well, once, once the audio, I'm like three twenty-five, I think we ended up at.
Yeah, so around three hundred, four hundred bucks. I did a. Just a quick check with some professional outfits that do like setting up meeting rooms for corporations and things. It's like ten grand or more.
Yeah. And brutal.
Yeah, and I mean, what we have, I think, is completely sufficient. And we can only, we can make small tweaks and. And get, you know, a percentage increase in quality and stuff like that. But for our purposes, I think that it's a pretty good solution. So, uh, Mark?
It, it's cool to talk about like cameras and stuff, but. There is a grand deal of infrastructure. That has to be done from there. If you have to wirelessly. Cover, cover the entire town. Just saying.
Not necessarily. I mean, there's, there's free, uh, like for instance, a Android app you can, you can put on a tablet. Or you can link an IP address from a camera on the internet somewhere to the viewer.
You can, but there's no security.
What do you mean?
Well, yeah. I, I guess maybe we're not, we're not talking the same thing. Municipality can't. There's all kinds of security options. Can't just go. Open source firmware and beam a security beam from a city, city building to. Back to your server that you call.
Okay, well, I mean, when we get to that point, we can look at all the legalities and things like that, if that's what you're talking about. But, um.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, there's just.
I mean, i- if it's sufficient for us to know what's going on down there, we can go the cheap option. And if we need to have some kind of, uh. Are, are you talking about like chain of custody type stuff?
Well, it's not just. You know, i- if it's not secured and done right, Joe Lo could. Get into our, could get into our system.
Right. Well, I won't make the password mark, one, two, three, four, but. I know what you're saying. No, I, I appreciate the comments and, I mean, we're kind of getting off into the easier, you know?
Yeah.
I talk technology, my brain starts. Revving up. So let's move on to, uh, old business. So fourteen A, approve or remove of annual off sale liquor license fee from the fee schedule. So this is something that came to us from the last meeting and it's. Listed in your packet there. And, um, I believe Terry mentioned that you could not find where it had ever been charged before.
So the only other business that has an off sale besides Pops is Corner Pantry. So I did talk to their bookkeeper and they couldn't find anywhere in their records where they'd ever been assessed that fee. So.
Okay, is.
It's an annual fee on just an off sale, which.
Uh, is that fee being paid on like the other types of? The annual fee for any of the other types of licenses?
No. So they pay the, they pay three hundred and fifty dollars a month for their operating agreement and the five percent of their alcohol purchases. For both, they have an on sale and an off sale at their corner pantry.
Okay.
But so I just wasn't sure. And I did talk to Gail and Bobby Bolt and they, they weren't aware. When that was ever collected either, so.
Excuse me, I'm trying to turn the volume off on this thing. You changed a lot of stuff around. Okay, so, um. Would anyone like to make a motion? On this one? I mean, uh, if we're not going to charge it, it, I don't think it should be on there.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, Linda makes the motion. I guess I'll second. And it's the motion to, uh, approve the removal of the liquor license, Linda?
Yes.
Or sorry, the liquor license annual fee.
Yeah.
On all the different ones? Okay. So, um, would anyone like to begin discussion past what we already did?
I'm gonna stay, abstain on this one.
Okay. Aaron's going to abstain. Did you have any thoughts on this one, Donna?
No, I think it needs to be removed.
Prove, prove the remove.
Yeah. To move, remove.
Okay, I mean, to me, if we're not going to charge it, then it shouldn't be on there. And if we are going to charge it, then we need to kind of work session it properly and figure out what we. Want to do. I mean, this is kind of a vestige of. Of, of the way things were done before, but it doesn't seem like it was being followed up on. And it's. As we found out earlier tonight, it, you know. We need to make sure that. And the ordinance and the. The backend protocols of the town are kind of aligned with what we expect them to be. So anyways, uh. If there's no further discussion, I guess we'll call it to vote. So all in favor? To approve the removal of the annual fees from the liquor license fee schedule? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mention, so that's everybody with no names. So motion carries. So moving on to new business. With the uniform alcoholic beverage license renewal. These are all renewals. So I guess I'll make the motion to do. A blanket approval. And renew all of licenses.
Linda, second down. Okay. Um, yeah, but that is with the attorney's approval after he's looked at it, correct?
These are just the beverage licenses.
Just a beverage. So it's, okay.
The operating agreements will, will come up in the next.
The next one, yeah, okay.
So Donna, I made the motion to do a blanket approval of all the license renewals. Donna, seconds. Any discussion on that one? Okay, see. Do you have a? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
All right, motion carries. Okay, so that's fifteen A is gone. Fifteen B, uh, approve operating agreement renewals. And pending until after attorney review. So, um.
I'll make that motion.
Well, it seems like we need to see what he has for us in the review before we motion. Before we approve them, right?
Before we pin, what is the, when is the date that we have to have it done by?
Um, I have to have everything mailed to the state by November the fifteenth.
Oh, so we have time. Okay. So we'll leave the spending until the next agenda?
Yes.
Yeah, let's, well, well, uh, let's go ahead and, and motion to move it to the next agenda.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay, Linda makes the motion all second. Any discussion on that one? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Move that one to the next agenda. Okay, item C, approve request to reclassify nonprofit utility account from commercial to residential. And that is. We don't have anything to attach to that one, right?
Actually, the Haha Building, we're gonna get it, Dan, Jared.
Okay.
What we're trying to do is get nonprofit organizations on residential rates. So I had Gary and Kim call for figures today. In August, we used twenty-two gallons of water. At museum. Last month was set. Our water bill was a hundred and forty-five bucks. Our water bill was a hundred forty-five bucks.
Wow.
That's twenty dollars a gallon. The church in December was five hundred gallons, a hundred and forty-five. These nonprofits are running on tight budgets, so if we can get it down to residential rates, you know, that's fifty dollars a month saving for all of us. Six hundred dollars here, the churches must can use that. It would be nice.
Okay.
Cause it's a hundred and forty-five, we're gonna have to shut off, there's no way we can afford that price and what was the one, we probably use fifteen gallons a month.
Right. Okay, I guess I'll, I'll make the motion to approve that request. Um, to reclassify nonprofit utility account from commercial to residential.
But I think you have to. If you're making it, I think you have to do it for all nonprofits or not.
Do they own the par, uh, assume the church owns the parson?
Okay, uh, so this is. So we're reclassifying the utility account, which is purposes billing, correct? So it's, it's, we have an account in our system that, um, is for nonprofit utilities. It's currently billing everybody at commercial. Is that, that's.
Well, we either buy it with commercial or if you look at, if you look at your, um, rates. So they're, they're in town residential, out of town, in town commercial, that's all, so they're paying. You know, that's the difference in a sewer. They're paying that much instead of that.
Okay, but that will go for, for all nonprofits.
Yeah, I think you have to.
But I mean, it's, uh, it was a blanket request for nonprofit utility account. So.
Does that work for Legion and Town?
Churches would all fall under that category. Legion. I I don't know. I can't honestly say they, they are in. Kind of to make a profit for building and I, I don't know, we'd have to.
How they're incorporated.
Uh, yeah, exactly, incorporation.
Let's do some housekeeping here on this because I, I made a motion, but let's let that motion fail. We'll call for a second and then we can make a more proper motion that captures the intent. So is there a second to the motion I made?
No.
No, second made, motion fails. Uh, so does anyone have a more proper motion to make to capture that? Linda, or?
Uh, just before, I just wanna.
I have a, I have a comment.
Yeah.
I, I think maybe we need to, um. Rather than making those residential, I think we need to make those a nonprofit and have a, have a separate category. And to whatever fee we think, but I, I, it needs its own category. It's not residential, it's not commercial.
Just look at your past five years.
Yeah, right. But yes. I, I, I wouldn't, yeah, I would surprise me if you did, yeah. So I think we just need to come up with a. A new category for this, a nonprofit category. Um, at this point, I would say. Um, that is something that we'll need to discuss. Well, I guess we could have it done now. We could also put it on the work session. Um, at this time, I would say, um, until the. We have gone through the ordinance that we could. Charge them residential fees until we are done with changing the ordinance.
So I, I actually ripped open the ordinance. It doesn't actually point to. In that much detail, to water rates, um, fees, charges and rates. For water services connections and taffies may be charged per resolution by the Board of Trustees who authority do so. There's nothing referencing, so the title of the ordinance is commercial and residential water rates, but inside the text, there's nothing. Distinguishing that we either have, that we have either residential. Or a commercial rate, so we wouldn't need a resolution to change it, but we don't necess, I don't think we necessarily have to change, have to have the ordinance is changed.
Right.
Commercial slash residential stays within this resolution. But another thing, I, I mean, I do think there needs to be a certain process to this, though. We need like, uh, what was it, five oh three Cs?
Yes.
We need to, alright, if you call, if you have, uh. Water service and you put on file your five oh three C. Five oh one C. Five oh one C threes, thank you. My letters and numbers and stuff. I, if you have, at the very least, we would need to make sure we're getting documentation, we're not. Getting phone call, I'm a nonprofit.
Yeah. We, we also need to make sure that we're not bumping up against any SDCLs. Like we were when we were considering doing my favorite, like, restore liquor license and things. So we need to review that, but I just, uh. Texted Neil to see if, if we can add. A separate billing, uh, fee schedule for a nonprofit into it, cause he's been working on updating our waters. Who notices over, over a period of time and, and doing the similar things that we did with the alcohol ordinance to, to pull out this. The, the specifics out of the ordinance and move them to like a policy document, stuff like that, so that ordinances can stand the. Hopefully better stand the test of time and as. You know, as. The. Sorry, I, I think I'm getting tired, but. You know, a- as, as things progress, you know, the building codes and things change, and if we have things built into our, our ordinances. That, that call out specific codes and specific references to codes in the ordinance specifying pipe sizes and. And, and model numbers and things, that's probably not the best way to do things for future proofing or ordinances, so anyways, that's what I was trying to say, sorry. Anyways, uh, so this one here, Linda, did you make, um, did anyone make a motion yet? I don't remember hearing one. So do we want to do, uh, do this for now and then we can look at, at doing that separately?
Well, considering we don't know how long it'll take us to get to that, I think that we need to give them their discount, a discount now. So I think the easiest way is to drop them down to residential rates until we get the ordinance rebid. So that would be the, the motion that I would make. All five oh one C threes that come in with their paperwork. The paperwork has to come in first before the charges is dropped, in my opinion.
Okay, so Linda, is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Okay, do we have a second for that motion?
I guess I'll second it.
Donna, you want to second that? Okay, Linda makes a motion, Donna seconds.
Comment?
Yeah.
What I was thinking, you know, how many gallons do you use over at Haha?
Uh, in September, August was twenty-two, it's a pandemic. And I currently use that in the portal.
Well. Couldn't we give, I mean, don't shoot me, uh, their first hundred gallons free?
No, you can't, you cannot do that. Um, we, we can. We can change it. We don't have to go with the residential fee when we're, when we go through this. We can think of something better to do for the nonprofits if, you know, if we want to.
Five gallons.
Well, and you see.
Their problem would be their problem, bad water problems, they'd have to fix them. We'd just be donating the water.
Well, we have a lot of issues where, yeah, where that's concerned because I also believe. And I have said this for years, and anybody that's been to these meetings can, would agree with me, they've heard me say it. I just think that the. That we need to change our minimum rate to a thousand gallons rather than three thousand. And drop the price and, and I know the problem we've had with that is because of, um, state loans. Uh, we have to have, there, there are requirements for our loans. But I really believe that three thousand is just too high for the minimum. Or, you know, I think it needs to be lower than that and that would help the senior citizens because we could lower that rate. For, for those people that use less, which is not me. Um, trust me, I use plenty of water, but, but there's a lot of people, I read the meters, I know how many people use. A hundred or five hundred gallons. And I just thought, I personally think that that should be lowered and the price should be lowered for the. Minimum use, um, whatever. That's, that's in the future.
Over is about the nonprofits and the utility.
Right, sorry.
Take the discussion to that.
Um, so kind of just to keep us from getting into potentially muddy waters, um. I was saying five oh one three C, now, now I'm thinking five oh one three C, but not also used as a primary residence. Cause we don't, I mean, if somebody's living there, we don't need them to bring in their five oh one three C and say, well, I technically have a nonprofit. And it's technically registered at this property, so I needed this. So, yeah, I think, I don't, I kind of feel like. Everybody knows what we're trying to do here specifically is give the Haha discount and I would say. And the churches, yeah, I would say. We need to. Maybe we should kick this to the next meeting.
You want to kick it to the next meeting?
Is that, just so we can make sure when we do it, we do it without putting ourselves in potentially hot water?
Recommend motion.
I mean, why do we have to take it to the next meeting?
Cause I don't want us to do this and have, have it put us in potentially muddy water. Setting it back.
Is there a way that you would like to amend the current motion to alleviate your concerns? So the, the motion on the floor is in relation to five oh one C threes, is that correct, Terry?
Yes. That provides the town office with the proper paperwork. Change their utility council from commercial to residential rates.
Um, I mean, alright. Let me start with. Which words?
To approve all five oh one three Cs. That provide town office with proper paperwork, change their utility accounts from commercial to residential rates.
Okay, yeah, no, that's fine, that's, alright, I'm, I'm thinking I'm getting ahead.
Alright, Dan, you had a comment?
Yeah. Yeah, I'd be very careful on precedents, as you said, everybody wants to have the heart in the right place, but. People can tie other five oh one C threes to other commercial properties just to do the dodging of the bull. I would have legal. Look over this before. Knowing the past, but, uh, five oh one C threes and. Organization, we waived. Fees and schedules and then not status precedents because we took individual sites. But you knew, Paul, you're opening up a whole new game of legality, so commercially users. That can come in on, so be very cautious.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, Jared, did you have your hand up before? Uh, I know Mark did, I, I, um, was making sure I didn't miss out. Mark, did you have a comment question?
Yeah, I just checked the record for, just to make sure, and I, I, I think they deserve a discount. There's thirty-nine registered. Five oh ones right here in Hermosa. And their addresses are linked to. Yeah, you need to be real careful how you draft this.
Yeah.
Because I think some of our bones are also kind of based on.
That, well, that's the thing, the loans are based on it.
Yeah, I just, all these, there, and there's a lot of addresses tied to them. So I just, I mean, I can see why the museum and the churches, but.
Okay, we don't get very push on the law.
I think, I think you for, I think you did. You should be able to get discounts individually, uh, or, or come up with some kind of remedy there that isn't going to make this business no problem. You know, yeah, um, Gary.
I interpret what he was saying, and then what they talked about, the, the, the loans are connected to it. So what you do is maybe just lower, so the only thing those type businesses want to qualify what they are. Just pays the loan amount because I think that, I think besides residents, commercial, it's the number of users. That's on there and you have to have that many users paid. And so you'd have, I don't think you could go lower than what the surcharges.
But the surcharge is. Right, yeah, that makes sense. I mean, it seems like we do need to have, uh, at least legal look at this, figure out, uh. I guess we're, where we can make accommodations without opening ourselves up to some bigger issues. So, uh.
We'll leave the spending until the next meeting, so.
Well, let's, we can, we can let this motion die, or we can, uh. All abstain, I suppose, so we're not denying the approval request. And then, uh, put on the next. Uh, agenda to have legal look at this. That's basically where we're at, put legal to look at it, right?
We can't approve that right now?
Suppose we could because we're, we stretch it out further.
I mean, it, it says right here, approve request, so we're not actually approving the request, but we are approving the attorney to look at it.
Yeah.
So I would think we'd be okay with that legally.
I mean, the other thing too is that there is kind of a time issue with this because.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, they have limited funds and if we want to keep dragging it out, they're gonna.
I know, yeah.
Have to keep paying more, so. Alright, well, let's go ahead. The motion on the floor is to approve the request. So, um, if we don't want to do that now, let's let that motion die and then make another motion to have the attorney. Uh, I guess craft us some language.
Well, and Terry can do some research when she gets back to, or have Kim do it, I don't know, um, to call the municipal league or whatever, all needs to be. Done, the, um. To make sure to.
Alright, well, let's, uh, let's do a vote on this motion on the floor, so all those in favor of the approved to request. All opposed? Alright, so motion fails.
Sorry.
So would you like to make the new, uh, new motion, Linda?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to have the attorney, um, look at the legalities of, uh, nonprofits. Um, billing for water and sewer and, um, for the town staff to, um, contact. Municipal league and. And the loan situation, make sure we're, you know. To make sure that that is legal and. Everything's copacetic.
Hold a second, John.
Hey, Donna, second. So do we have any discussion on this particular motion? We're kind of at a decision point here. Um, let's see. Okay, so no discussion, all those in favor?
Alright.
Alright, okay, motion carries. Hey, item D, we're. Yeah, oh, you, Shelley's coming up for this one. Okay, good. Request from Haha Santa's, Haha Santa's Village for funding from the BBB funds.
I'm Shelley, I'm representing Haha. For a donation from a triple B fund, help pay for the toys for the Santa shop. Um, we're not just promoting Haha, we're actually promoting. Hermosa, cause we bring people in, they shop at Pops, which we have to this event, they build death, they go pizza, they. Go support other parts of the town. Um, Haha also supports the Costa County Fair and. And we try and support a lot of things also, but we started the Christmas carnival in two thousand twelve. And it's about the only fundraiser we have now, but we don't call it a fundraiser, it's a fundraiser. Um, we have many events at Haha, like we had the branding of the boards party for the farmers and ranchers. Um, we've had three of them, we had a Veterans Day program with service dolls, which is really interesting. We've had, um, three plane art, um, artists come out and. They paint out in the open, go to old buildings and paint that. Um, we've been doing trick or treating six years and in the past, they had this Hermosa Saturday night. And they had some pretty good guest speakers with that. We had some storyteller events where we portrayed. Hermosa people that, um, were pretty famous, that are buried up in the cemetery and I'm sure I missed some other things. But I don't know, we really got the museum looking really good. I don't know if any of you have been in there, but the bottom part is completely finished. Um, we put a lot of blood, sweat and tears in it to get it open. We have some. Um, we put a lot of blood, sweat and tears in it to get it open, we have someone working on. Um, being open in the summertime so people can tour it, we had a pretty good year this year. Um, with the Christmas carnival, we, um, spent about twelve hundred dollars last year on toys. We ran out and toys have gone up a lot. And we have over a hundred and twenty kids that come and play these games free. So I'm just asking for any kind of donations from the Triple B fund to help. Pay for some of the toys or just come to our event and help support us. We have a soup, um, and dessert meal free bill donation and Texas Roadhouse always donate the, um. Yeah, which they will donate on Tuesday's meal for the beef stew also. So anybody can donate to this fund, um. We have webpage where they can just go on to Haha and just support it or contact me. That's all I'm asking.
Okay, thanks Shelley, so you don't have a specific, uh, amount that you're requesting this year?
Okay, five hundred dollars. Now, um, the most we receive from people are two hundred dollars, you know, but. We, we go to Menards and buy the cheap two ninety nine and three ninety nine toys in their bins and. You know, and then we get some higher end stuff, but it gives gift to play these carnival games free, they get tokens, they go to Santa's shop. They buy for mom and dad and themselves and it's really fun to watch those kids, I mean. I do the Santa shop and it takes forever to buy something, but it's. It's their money that they're buying things with, so should come and just observe them some year, it's December seventh at the school.
Okay, thank you.
We done this before, this kosher under BBB?
I think this is kosher under BBB, but I think we need to make sure of that. And so again, some research and, and I would, um, I would make the motion that with. Research being done, if it is kosher to do this with BB and BBB funds, I would recommend that. We, uh, take five hundred and, and give it to them for that purpose, that's my motion.
I was gonna say a thousand.
I just thank you, any further discussion on this one? Nope, okay, all those in favor? Motion carries, very good, item fifteen E. Thank you. Discussion on wording for item sixteen, so that's the items from constituents, so, um.
I think Terry has it, that was a recommendation.
Yeah, okay, you sent that to me, right, Jerry? Aaron, would you like to open up the discussion on this one?
Yeah, um, I kind of been hearing a bit about this for a little while now, um, one thing I do want to point out though. That happened last time, the only time I'm aware of in recent history that was, this was changed, I believe it was actually you who made the change. Items from constituents used to be items from citizens. And the difference between a constituent and a citizen, a citizen, they have to be, you know, a citizen, constituent is everybody who has an interest in something going on in this meeting.
Yep.
That was the first, that, yeah.
There, there, the constituents are the ones that voted us in. Well, so we're looking at.
Constituents is broader than that.
Is it really?
Yeah, constituents are basically anybody who has a reason to, to, yeah. Um, but the only thing I, I could see in here that really might be worth changing is just to delete everything under two, because I think that's where things get confusing. Just delete it all.
Okay.
This is time for citizens of the town own property, just, just unnecessary, I think. That's another thing, I don't think we need a motion quote unquote to change this, it's an agenda, the board drafts agenda for each meeting uniquely. So as long as the finance officer has been, is like informed. What the agenda should be and that's been approved by the chair, I don't think. Need a motion to change it.
Yeah, Jerry, did you have a comment on?
Uh, the, the only, the comment I have in reference to what Aaron was saying, you know, you take that all the way up in the, in the, in the past. We don't want to just assume that people assuming that they can come and talk, I think it's important enough. To let them people know that they are important to us, the people within the one mile radius are important to us. The person that operates a business in a leased facility. That lives outside of town, we, I think it's important enough and we're, we really want to make sure the image of our town is out there. So, uh, I don't think you have two lines or three lines, you know, to say, hey, come on folks, we, we want your input. Uh, we don't want to, because if that goes away, uh, you know, people notice it out there, I mean, there was some bad comments, I don't. You know, and that, when it happened on, on the, on the webpage of, why, why did that change, so I'm gonna ask that question. Yeah, and, and I, I just think it's, those people are important enough in the one mile radius, all businesses, commercial businesses. Within the one mile radius, at some point in time, um. Nah, we just, I just think it's important to. They call out to everyone and say, you're, you're welcome.
But we also have people that live further that have interest in the town. And also are that eliminating them from being able to say anything?
Well, when I drafted that, I was thinking of this definition for constituent, which is. Um, I mean, one is serving as part of a whole component, which I was thinking more of empowered to elect or designate, so that would be a voter. People that elect us to this position and then, um. So that, that, kind of the idea was, was to try and streamline things such that. The people with the most interest, the voters that voted us in would, would have precedence here, I, I see what you're saying about. Giving time for people that, in a broader sense and, and, and maybe we do need to open that up, but. At the time, it was, it was more to kind of whittle it down to the people that elected us directly. Uh, but the thing is though, anybody who's going to be impacted by any item on the agenda can come and speak on that, they, they don't, this is only for the. The, the closing, uh, section of the meeting, right? And, and so that was just the intent on that, so, uh, I think these are, are great comments and. We can look at, uh, weaken this for the next one and maybe make it a little more inclusive to, to people. Uh, a little bit further out, or maybe they don't meet this exactly and they do want to comment, so I saw Ani and then Phil and then Jerry.
I don't think people are gonna start busting the door down just to come sit at a meeting, but you're looking at Rapid City. It's a public meeting, anybody that lives in Rapid City can go to the meeting, if I wanted to go in there and sit at their meeting, I could, it's a public meeting. I think anybody that's got a Hermosa address should be welcome to come to this meeting, if they live within the one mile radius or. Have a P O box and live six miles out, I don't know, they have a Hermosa address, I think everybody should be welcome to come in.
Yeah, and again, this wasn't a, a, a de-invitation to anybody, this is specifically labeling. Who can kind of raise their hand and voice their concerns, anybody can come to the meeting, I mean, you can live in Nebraska and come to the meeting. Because these are open public meetings, as, as you mentioned, but.
People don't read it that way though, no reading it, they're taking it as a.
Okay, uh, Phil?
Most municipal is in corrective, I think they just say it was a public comment. They just use the word, the terminology of public and that's everything.
Okay, thanks Phil, uh, Jerry?
Yeah, so somebody else was thinking about it.
All right, well, you're thinking.
Thing is, is, if you did use that whole long thing, and I think maybe the public, but maybe the first time it goes out. You would say the public and then, then put all those people in there, but not all, this is a list of what we consider to be public. But it's not all inclusive, I said, do that maybe the first time and then maybe after a while you can take that, that was the problem. I mean, in, in the past, there's been people who came to meetings and had good. And was told, being, they didn't live within the city limits, they could, they did not have any comments. That cost about ninety thousand dollars in, in a, in a bad design of the wastewater treatment plant. Because the person who wanted to comment could have fixed it at that point in time.
Um, Aaron, did you have a comment?
Yeah, um, I think that. I mean, I, I, I think those, yeah, items from constituents, public comments, delete everything after that. Delete line two, keep it as simple as possible, as far as whether or not people think they're invited to the meetings. If they know of Hermosa well enough to know that there's a board here and they paid any amount of attention at all, they. How to be aware by this time that we are way more inviting to people than, than it may have been in the past, I'm just, I mean, we. I, I, I don't know, it kind of feels like we're. We're looking too deep into this, maybe just simply changing it to public comment and making it smaller, not more, I don't think making it more complicated to do anything else to that.
Yeah, that's not what I was considering, but, uh, I think it's probably, uh, we could take this offline and, and. Figure out what we're gonna do on that and it'll show up on the next agenda and give y'all something to look forward to for the next one. And, uh, so moving on to items from constituents. Is there, uh, any, anybody who would wish to make a comment here, Jerry?
I just want to echo what, uh, Aaron was saying, that it is very, no, I mean. Even though some of the, you've never, this board here has never told anybody that beings that weren't. A citizen that they couldn't come in, and I think that is getting out there. Uh, but, but the concern was is it was there and then it wasn't. But I think if it goes out there in agenda and then if someone asks a comment, you know. People who know can comment on it, who's been at the meeting to say, no, it's open to the public, so.
Okay, thanks Jerry, any other comments, uh?
I just had a question, um, for Terry, I guess, Terry, do you know if the state cancels S B's beer license? Do you get confirmation from the state that they're beer?
I got an email from Laura that said once that that. Um, I, we, we did our cancer ninety day that they would take her gear license.
Well, I was informed that they're, they're beer licensed, it's not a ninety day.
No, they, they, what they told me was what, it would happen when that ninety days was up and they lost their liquor license.
Yeah, you know, that was the email, I got.
You gotta copy that. We have a couple of signs going in the Ferguson subdivision and it's been.
Right, yeah, I saw that.
Okay, you saw that? All right, you already know about it, but it's like, who do we report it to? Marshall, here, you know, town office?
Yeah, I guess the town office and then, um, I'm gonna try and get out there with some acetone, see if it'll come off and. Hopefully doesn't happen again, but. Looks like somebody took a paint marker, like, uh. It, it's like one, a paint marker with something that big, maybe even a, I don't know if that's a bingo thing or not, but. But it's like a bunch of lines like that, but they're dripping too, so it's not spray paint, because spray paint would have. You know, the, the, the distinct feathering going away from there, so, so it was like, uh, if you go look. The fifteen mile an hour sign going into Ferguson subdivision, that's what we're talking about. So you can take a look at that.
I can run, I can grab my, go gas, wanna go buy tomorrow morning?
Somebody will. Any other items from constituents? Hey, uh, trustee input, Donna?
No, I think I said mine, it's a good meeting, I'm glad it moves along pretty, pretty good. Still.
Yep, couple items, took a little bit of time, but that's how it goes sometimes, uh, Linda?
Um, I would just like to say, and I guess I would like it, um, maybe even written in the minutes. That, um. People are welcome, anybody's welcome. Come in and listen, help us, help us with ideas, with decisions, um. Please come.
Um, yeah, I think, uh, I think this meeting went really smooth, it was a little long, but it was also a long agenda, a lot on it. Um, some somewhat contentious issues, um, Terry said we got, we did get one letter. Um, I think tonight was an example of, 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 of a good meeting and I, I look forward to somebody who wants to, who wants to help us. Help us with this stuff and, um. And but I, as, as all of you saw tonight, there's, things can get tense and you have, really, there are times when you just have to make sure you're. You're looking from the perspective of the ordinances of, of statute, of, of the rules. And only that, without any personal or, or. Friendship based thoughts and just go at it and, and do things the way they're supposed to do and I, I just, I hope we can get somebody in here who's gonna. Help us do this a little better, I think we're doing pretty good, but I think we. We still have, we, we can get it better and hopefully we will.
All right, thank you, uh, I guess my input is, thanks for coming out and, um, was a good meeting. I don't think we have any need for an extended session at this time, so I'll enter, uh, unless somebody disagrees. Phil, entertain a motion to adjourn.
At nine oh nine?
Nine oh nine.
So Donna made it?
Yeah, Donna made it.
All second.
Twenty seconds, all those in favor?
Hi, thank you.
Yeah, I, I read through it.